Okay, good evening, everybody. Call to order. This is regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. And I'll ask if we can take a roll call for the Commissioners present tonight, please.
Sir Commissioner Davidson.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Luber Mersky is absent today. Commissioner Privatalli.
Here.
Commissioner Saudi.
Here.
Vice Chair Samutzi.
Here.
And Chair Mercado.
Here.
Okey dokey, thank you. Next, we'll move on to order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? That can be done by the majority, being we have one item, I presume not. No period, none. Great. Next, if we can move on to the meeting procedures, please. So due to COVID-19 shelter in place order, we've had to establish new ways of how we are conducting our public meetings. I'd respectfully like to ask to ask if they can address how the public comment will work this evening.
Thank you, Chair Mercado. Good evening Commissioners. Tonight, we are accepting public comments over the telephone and through YouTube Live chat. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where members of the community can provide public comments on agenda items in YouTube Live chat feature at We also have the option for community members to attend via conference call by calling the following number, 669-900-9128. And then entering meeting ID, 897-5534-1830 pound. There is no participant ID, so you can just press pound again and you'll be connected. If you are participating by telephone and wish to provide a public comments on an agenda item, you can press star nine when the chair opens the public comment period for the item you'd like to speak on. What this does is virtually raises your hand. Once it is your turn to speak, you will hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. At that time, you can then press star six to unmute yourself. You can then speak, introduce yourself, and you'll be allotted up to three minutes to provide your comments. If you are submitting comments on YouTube, you can enter your public comments in the live chat box to let us know you want your comments read aloud by writing in all caps, "PUBLIC COMMENT." Prior to your comments, introduce yourself and let us know if you're speaking on agenda item or non-agenda item. Comments in the chat are also limited to three minutes worth of text. Please note, the YouTube chat feature does have a 200-character limit. If you have more than 200 characters in your comment, you can enter your first comment, then hit enter, and you'll be able to enter another 200 characters in the next box. Comments will be read as submitted. Words including profanity, obscenity, discriminatory language that disturb the decorum of this meeting will not be read into the record. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission and published to our website. For more information about real-time public comments, please visit our live commenting pilot page at www.cityofsanrefel.org/live-commenting-pilot.
Thank you, Rafi. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll describe quickly meeting procedures. We're going to begin with the staff report tonight. Then we'll hear, I guess there's no applicant tonight, so we'll hear from staff and the team, and then at that point, we'll open this up to members of the public if they'd like to provide any comment. And we're just going to ask if members of the public can keep their comments to two to three minutes. Commissioners will then have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff, applicant, or the public after each segment. And we will then close the public hearing and then bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action when necessary. So next item, urgent communications. Is there anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda? May address the Commission at this time.
So if there's anybody that wants to call in their comments for items that are on this agenda now is or was the time. I see nobody on the phone line at this moment. But if you dial in in the next minute or so, you can press star nine to virtually raise your hand to provide comments for any items not on tonight's agenda. While I wait to see if there's any phone comments, if people want to participate and provide any comments for items not on the agenda via YouTube Live chat, now is the time. You can enter your comments in YouTube Live at this time. We'll give that a minute to see if anybody calls in or has any chat comments for items not on tonight's agenda. And not seeing anybody on the phone nor in the chat box with comments for items not on the agenda.
Okey doke, thanks. So next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. I'll ask, we can work on the minutes from October 13th, 2020. And are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
So this will be the same process. If you're on the phone and you'd like to make comments on the consent calendar, which consists of the meeting minutes from 10:13, now is the time to raise your hand by pressing star nine. And if you're in the chat, if you have any comments on the minutes from October 13th, now is the time to enter those. Let's give that a minute, see if anybody has any comments from the public. And not seeing anybody raise their hand on the phone line nor any chat comments on the 10:13 minutes, Chair Mercado.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll either entertain a motion or if any of the Commissioners have any edits or changes they propose to the minutes, now's your chance.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Great. Motion and a second. Should we do a quick roll call, please?
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samutzi?
Yes.
And Chair Mercado.
Yes. Thank you.
Can I just ask for confirmation of the second on that motion?
That was me.
Thank you.
Okey doke. We will now move to the public hearing. We're going to move to tonight's only item. And this is public hearing item number two. Public hearing on chapters one through nine of the draft San Rafael General Plan 2040. So I'll ask if staff can provide its report, please.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm just going to check with Rafi and Paul to see if they wanted to say anything before I began my presentation. I am prepared to walk you through, but just wanted to give you guys.
I think you are now a well-known entity, Barry, to the Commission.
Very good. Thank you. Great. I'm happy to be here this evening. This is our first formal presentation and public hearing on General Plan 2040. I'll be sharing my screen and walking you through some of the highlights and also talking a little bit about tonight's meeting. Okay, can everyone see that? Nod, thumbs up? Okay, good, great. So we, I was actually here at the Commission about six weeks ago and gave you kind of a sneak preview of the general plan, and I'm not going to repeat a lot of what was in that presentation. I think most of you were there. I don't think all of you were there, but most of you were present. But I am going to start this evening with a little bit of context for both the general plan and tonight's meeting. And now my screen is, there we go. Okay, great. A couple of just ground rules about the general plan update. First of all, this, although it is a general plan update, it's not a brand-new general plan. So I want to point out, first of all, we didn't start this process from scratch. The clear direction from the City Council was to move the time horizon for General Plan 2020 forward to 2040 and really use General Plan 2020 as the baseline for this process. I think the feeling was that the prior plan had worked well, was working well, but had a 2020 time horizon that needed to be updated. There are a number of new state laws that have been passed in the last 15 years. A large number of recent plans and programs that have been implemented that we wanted to incorporate in the document. Things like our Climate Action Plan and the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan that really needed to be embedded in the general plan to some extent. There are also issues and trends that have emerged over the last 10 or 15 years that aren't fully reflected in the general plan. So this was an opportunity to weave those in to the document. To guide us through the process, the City Council created, excuse me, a 24-member steering committee that served as a sounding board for the policy and program updates throughout the process. That steering committee met 25 times over a period of about two and a half years, and your commission was represented by by Commissioner Davidson as part of that. And thank you, Commissioner Davidson, for your attendance and contribution at those meetings. It was a diverse committee made up of residents from all over the city, from different stakeholder groups and different advocacy groups and different neighborhoods. So I feel like we heard from a lot, a lot of different perspectives. And although we didn't reach consensus on every issue, we did have a robust discussion on a lot of the topics that are covered in the general plan update. So this is just a quick reminder of where we are in the process. You can see the red star. We're just at the beginning here at our first hearing. We will be meeting again with the Commission in a couple of weeks on chapters 10 through 14. Tonight, we're really focusing on chapters one through nine. Later in November, we're going to be releasing the Environmental Impact Report for the general plan as well as the Downtown Precise Plan, which is a freestanding document that we will also be asking you to consider as part of this process. So the general plan, the Downtown Precise Plan, and the EIR will all be moving concurrently through a series of hearings that we anticipate will go for roughly six months before we ask you to approve a resolution next March to the City Council. At that point, the City Council will hold public hearings on the general plan to consider the document as well. So there will be many opportunities for public comment and public input throughout this process. And we look forward to that. I do want to point out that those orange arrows on this timeline are Planning Commission hearings, so we do anticipate hearings in December and January and March as well, and there may be a hearing in February not yet scheduled. So this is the table of contents for the general plan. You can see the 15 elements of the document laid out here. Tonight, we're going to be walking through chapters one through nine, and we will talk about chapters 10 through 14 at the next meeting. We're not really talking too much about chapter 15 in this process. That's the housing element that is being updated separately on its own timeline pursuant to state law. So next year, you'll be hearing more about the housing element, but right now, we're still operating under a housing element that guides us through 2023. So again, I'm going to go quickly through the chapters one through nine just to provide some highlights. And when I go through these chapters, when we get into the elements, I want to point out a couple of the issues that the steering committee spent quite a bit of time on just to kind of highlight where the Commission may want to weigh in on certain topic areas. So when we get into land use, for example, I'll highlight some of the more centered conversations. The first two chapters of the general plan are really to provide some context. They lay the groundwork. These are not really policy chapters per se. Chapter one is the introduction to the plan. Explains the purpose of the document, how to use the plan, how it relates to other plans and programs. Talks a little bit about the plan update process and how the documents organized. Chapter two, this is something that's not in General Plan 2040. We thought it would be a good addition to the general plan to really kind of provide a framework for all of the elements that follow. It's a fairly dense and comprehensive document, and this really lays the groundwork and talks about, you know, what's San Rafael's history, what are the forces driving change in the city? Things like demographics and transportation and our economy. How are those forces shaping the city and guiding some of our decisions? This is also where we present forecasts, demographic and economic forecasts for 2040, and then the guiding principles, which really are a statement of our values as a city. And these were developed in collaboration with the General Plan Steering Committee. The land use element is the, one of the mandated chapters of the general plan. As I explained at the last meeting, we have in the general plan mandated elements and optional elements. Once you adopt an optional element, it carries the same legal weight as a mandatory element. Some cities just adopt the mandatory elements. San Rafael, I think wisely, has recognized that there are certain issues or topic areas that really warrant having their own general plan element and has added a number of optional elements into the plan which we're carrying forward. Land use is really where we talk about our growth and development policies. This is the chapter where we have the land use map for the city, which is really the framework for our zoning map. It starts with a profile of existing land uses in the city, how many acres are in each land use, et cetera. Goes through key plan concepts. These are sort of a mix between best practices and planning and how those best practices are expressed in the general plan for San Rafael. We have a height map and a floor area ratio map in this element. And those are carried forward verbatim from General Plan 2020. The only changes to the height and FAR map are in the downtown precise plan area, and that will be coming to you at a separate meeting. So it will be another opportunity to talk through some changes that are being made in downtown. As far as the goals, policies, and programs, these are primarily carried forward from the previous general plan with obvious edits. Well-managed growth and change is the first goal, the complete community, which in other words is having a balanced mix of uses and then distinctive neighborhoods. Couple of points here. The steering committee spent quite a bit of time talking about the future of our industrial land supply. And one of the issues we grappled with was whether how tightly we were going to draw the line on saying housing was not a permitted activity in industrial areas. There was quite a robust discussion among our committee members about whether we should allow some housing or no housing or identify certain areas that are near transit that may be appropriate or maybe live-work. So that was one topic area. Another was the future of our neighborhood shopping centers. With retail changing particularly post-pandemic, there was some discussion about can all of our neighborhood shopping centers survive? What are some of the new uses? We might think about incorporating housing being the primary use that we talked about. And some of the policy language in this element really reflects, I would say, a more flexibility with respect to the future of those neighborhood centers, but also wanting to make sure that we keep neighborhood centers as a part of the community fabric. They're really invaluable in defining neighborhoods and providing convenient services for residents. The neighborhoods element, in some respects, this is really a kind of a continuation of the land use element, but at the neighborhood level. So what this element does is it takes those citywide policies and really lets them land on the ground at the individual neighborhood level. We've divided the city here into five planning areas, and each of those planning areas is comprised of different neighborhoods. Many of these, most of these neighborhoods were identified in the General Plan 2020. What you'll find for each of these numbered areas is a profile of the neighborhood and then some key policies that address issues that are specific to that neighborhood. And I will say, a lot of the input from this came from the neighborhoods themselves. I have a slide later in the presentation that talks more about how we solicited that input. This was not really an area where we asked the steering committee to drive the conversation, but rather went to neighborhood associations, HOAs, the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods, and other organizations that speak for the neighborhoods to get their direct perspective. The community design and preservation element, this is considered an optional element of the general plan. Really talks about the look and feel of the city. The element begins with kind of an overview of San Rafael's design characteristics. Its setting, its views, its topography, and so on, and then presents these five goals that you see here on the screen. The goal of protected cultural heritage previously was in the arts and culture element. We've moved it to the community design and preservation element because historic preservation is really about, it is about culture, of course, but it's also fundamentally about the built form of the city and how we manage our historic resources. And we've added a number of policies and programs on preservation to this element. I think at the steering committee level, a lot of the conversation was how prescriptive, how prescriptive should the city be with respect to design? And how do we weave in some of the state mandates around objective design standards into this kind of more higher-level policy document about what kind of city we want to be, what we want our community to look like? How do you have that very really subjective conversation at the same time where developing objective standards under state law that streamline housing production? So it's that balance that I think really came to play in our communications of the steering committee. Conservation and climate change, this was previously the conservation element. It's grown. We've added not only a pretty thorough discussion of climate change in this element, but also what was the air and water quality element. And a lot of the sustainability policies from the previous general plan are now grouped together in this this element that really looks hard at our natural resources, carrying forward a lot of the policy framework for wetlands, creeks, hillsides, biological resources, wildlife and so on. And then bolstering that with new policies that deal with things like urban forestry, light pollution, low impact development and green infrastructure and renewable energy. And I think the challenge in this element was to weave in the climate action plan to look at the ways we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city in a practical and effective way. And then to balance some of the policies on things like wetlands and creeks with the need for housing and the need for other types of development in the city. And that is a balancing act. And I think a lot of the committee conversation was how do we find that balance? What's the right balance between our resource protection policies and our development policies? And again, with a diverse committee representing a lot of different interests, we weren't all on the same page at all times on that. The parks reckon open space element, chapter seven of the general plan is a combination of what was the parks and recreation element and the open space element. These compatible topics are kind of merged in this element. We have a series of policies carried over from general plan 2020. And I would say a much more robust set of policies about managing our open spaces and parks. Not just about acquiring more open space. I think, you know, some of the prior general plan language was carried forward from general plan 2000, written back in the 1980s during a time period where the city was still in the mode of acquiring private land as open space and assembling an open space network. At this point, most of that network is in place. And the shift is really toward how do we manage the open space that we have? So more policies about wildfire prevention in our open space areas, things like encampments, environmental education, et cetera, and less about acquisition. One of the major recommendations with respect to parks is to do a parks master plan. This is something the city doesn't have and hasn't ever had, at least in modern times, and needs, I think, to plan not only for its open space, but also for its recreational programming. And how do we make the most of the assets that we have? Things like joint use of our school properties for recreation and so on.
Barry, if we have questions about any chapters, are we going to do that after you run through all this? Or should we be interrupting now?
Yeah, I apologize. This is meant to just provide an overview and we're going to have a lot of time for follow up on all of this. Yeah, I'm actually getting pretty close to the end. So yeah, so the safety and resilience element, which is chapter eight, is again a mandatory element. A lot of the content of general plan 2020 is carried forward here. I would say there's a much more focused emphasis on sea level rise in this element. We've incorporated climate adaptation measures from Bay Wave and some of the other recent work that the city has done. And also wildfire prevention, again, is, I think, of elevated importance and is focused, really a focus of this element. You can see some of the other topic areas. We've added pandemic and public health emergencies, public safety power shut offs issue of the day, and some of the other topics that were not as thoroughly addressed in the prior plan. The noise element, again, this is a mandatory element of the general plan. We didn't change a whole lot in this element. I think the major change here is that the state has come up with new guidelines for what noise levels are compatible with different land uses. So we've incorporated that information here. And here again, where the committee really focused its efforts is the compatibility of encouraging housing in areas that may have relatively high noise levels, areas near the smart train or near the freeways downtown San Rafael, which is impacted by 101 and generally high volumes of traffic. How do you balance that with the desire to keep, you know, maintain a quiet environment and compatible noise levels with housing? So just a couple of slides. I actually thought it would be helpful to explain how we got from general plan 2020 to general plan 2040. And I'm going to do this in just four or five slides, just to kind of walk you through. The slide on the left that you see, I'm sorry, the box on the left that you see here is verbatim. That's just cut and pasted from general plan 2020, which again was adopted in 2004. What we did is what we called a policy audit. And this is just a page from the audit from the conservation element from January 2019. This document is from January 2019. We repeated each policy and then we did a staff evaluation of whether the policy should be carried forward or edited or how it might be wordsmithed. And that was presented to the steering committee. You see this picture at the bottom left is our committee in February 2019 going through the audit. And then we gave the committee a chance. And this final column on the right hand side that you see here, our committee member comments on staff's recommendations and on the policies from general plan 2020. So we went through this kind of iterative process and got staff, got the committee's comments and then drafted the new policies for general plan 2040 and put them side by side with general plan 2020 and did a track change highlight of everything, every word that was changed. And then asked the committee to weigh in on the edits. So the committee, again, there was another iteration where we met this. In this case, it was small groups. You can see one of your own commissioners at the table here and got feedback on that. With that feedback, we did another track change version of the general plan 2040 policies a few months later. And then cleaned that up to create the formatted version of general plan 2040. And there was yet one more round, one other iteration. So this is iteration number four of the policies in July 2020 when these were all posted. Actually, this was published online in the end of May 2020. And these are comments that were received not only from the steering committee, but also from the public that got us to the September 2020 draft general plan. So again, it was very iterative. A lot of folks have weighed in on this. And particularly at the steering committee level, there were opportunities to really shape the changes. I did want to point out with the neighborhoods element, there was a letter that was sent. This is October 3rd, 2019, so a little over a year ago, to every neighborhood organization in the city. And we made the rounds to neighborhood meetings. This is one here, directing people to the general plan website and asking them to complete surveys for their neighborhoods. So this is one of those point and click on your neighborhood and a survey opens up. And then you complete the questions. We heard from almost every neighborhood in the city through this. We had to do a lot of follow up to get, you know, a hundred percent response rate from all the neighborhoods. But this information was really what forms the basis for the neighborhoods element of the general plan. So with the last couple of slides, I just want to go over some kind of housekeeping for tonight's hearing. We are going to have some clarifying questions and ask the commission to accept the report, the staff report, and then we'd like you to accept public comments on chapters one through nine at that point. We will then have commission discussion of the public comments and anything that you'd like to add on chapters one through nine. And then the commission will be continuing the hearing to November 12th or a discussion of chapters 10 through 14 and any outstanding issues on chapters one through nine. For the benefit of the public, if you don't get, if you are watching this after the meeting is over, you can still speak on chapters one through nine on November 12th. But our priority on November 12th is to talk about chapters 10 through 14. We're going to return to the commission on December 15th with responses and edits to the issues that are raised this evening. And then we expect that at that meeting, we may have some additional comments and letters that we will be receiving and will continue to make edits into early 2021. So the opportunities for public comment are going to continue until early next year. A quick overview in your agenda packets for this evening. We received a number of comments. I just want to highlight those comments here. There were about, I think at last count at 12 noon, 10 requests to add some specific language regarding redwood trees in the conservation and the community design elements. There was a letter from the Sierra Club endorsing some comments that had previously been submitted by the Marin Conservation League. There was a letter from a resident on chapters three through eight, a letter from Marin Autobahn regarding the canalways language and the wetlands policies in the plan, a letter from San Rafael Heritage indicating they would be submitting more detailed comments in the coming weeks, but had some just general feedback. A letter from a resident with some specific issues on climate change and conservation policies. These, I think, dealt with wildlife particularly. And then a letter from Responsible Growth in Marin and a letter from the Terra Linda Homeowners Association with some specific comments and suggestions on the land use neighborhoods and conservation and climate change elements of the plan. In closing, just to point out again, all of the documents, including the chapters of the general plan are online at www.sanrafil2040.org. There are one or two elements of the plan that have yet to be posted. These are the last couple of chapters and we are working on getting those up by the end of this week. And with that, I will stop sharing the screen and go back to clarifying questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Barry. I appreciate that. And I think the Commissioner Saudi's initial thought, what I was thinking to streamline this because really the idea here is to provide some general thoughts and comments, but then focus in on some of these chapters. So maybe right now, if we want to have any questions or general, maybe more general questions we want to ask, we can start there, then open this up and see if the public has any comments and then really have a dialogue with Barry and staff in terms of focusing in on any specific chapters. And Barry, let me know if you disagree, but my thought would be, probably makes more sense for all of us to comment collectively or, you know, as a group on each section. See if we're in, able to provide you some guidance or comments or whatever collectively and then move on and then at the end, kind of wrap it up if people want to have general discussions.
I think that's fine, yeah.
That sounds good. And there are some things that I was thinking of that are not included in chapters. So I think if we can go through the chapters and then have like, you know, a time for questions that don't like fall within those categories, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, for sure. No, I think that's key. And so we can, and those may spur other ideas. I think it's kind of open and fluid on this one. So I think right now, what I would start off with if, before we open this up to the public for any public comment, if there's anything in response to the presentation, anything that's maybe a little more poignant or follow up questions that you may have, before we get into more of the discussion, this is the time to do it. Commissioner Davidson.
It's not a question, but since I did participate in the steering committee, one of the things I struggled with on the language in the general plan was that from a planning commissioner perspective, I kind of wanted more direct answers to the issues we face. And Barry, you did an awesome job at explaining to the group about the intent of the general plan. And then, once it's adopted, there's going to be actionable items that occur in relation to each other's policies. So I was just wondering if you would have like a minute conversation on the differences? Because I think it's really important for the general public and maybe other commissioners to really understand that difference.
Sure. Yeah, so this is intended to be a policy document. And there are, for most of the policies, specific implementation measures. What you haven't seen yet and what we're still putting together is an appendix to the general plan that lays out all of the implementing actions and the timeframe and, you know, the priority level for those actions. So you'll see, for example, actions to amend the zoning ordinance, to, you know, incorporate various recommendations that are in the general plan, things like the sea level rise overlay, for example. These are things that are going to happen after the plan is adopted. So this is basically a 20-year roadmap for planning and land use issues. So a lot of the actionable items are not, they're not effective with adoption of the plan. You're essentially adopting a work program that will go on for two decades with amendments as needed that implement these policies. I do think though, that there are some pretty directional, there definitely are actionable policies though, and that when staff prepares staff reports, they will be able to cite specific policies in the general plan as justification or as the rationale for making certain decisions or policies as in the previous plan. I mean, it's a little bit of a balancing act, but you know, in any plan, there will, there will always be, I think, these, you know, these policy directives that are there. You know, they have mandatory language, things like shall or require that you're going to rely on and, you know, and quote or cite when you make future decisions on projects, findings, whatever. I mean, there are specific findings embedded in some of these policies that you must make before approving development and so on.
Barry, can I just add on that Barry's summary is very good, that it's a plan of where we aspire to be over the next 20 years. And there will be tasks to do over the 20 years to make those visions, goals and policies come to fruition. Those, of course, some of them will be simpler and are, you know, minor cleanups, updates of ordinances or creation of programs and so forth. Others will take a lot more work and will take either staff time or contractual help to do. And a lot of that will depend on the city's finances, budget and priorities as well as staffing levels. But it is a work plan that we will work towards and we will have check ins with the commission and council over the last, you know, over the next 20 years. Now, looking back at general plan 2020, there were lots of policies and programs that were developed to implement that plan that we weren't able to get to for various reasons, mostly funding. But it is, at least it is a roadmap of what everyone is kind of striving to go towards and kind of planning to do over the next 20 years. And things may have to be adjusted though, so I think that's important to note.
Great, thank you. I think that was helpful. Anyone else have any initial general questions for Barry to help guide this conversation? Or initial feedback before we open it to the public?
Yeah, I had, I had one, one general question. There are a couple of thematic items in the framework and guiding principles that I felt were kind of connected. I think there was one that was the high land construction and housing costs. And that kind of tied into the economic changes. So basically, in that, in the first section, there's the discussion about feasibility of development simply because of the high cost of land and the low subsequently yield that developers can look at, particularly with greater requirements or encouragements to build below market rate housing. And then next to that, in the economic changes, was also this discussion potentially of like midsize businesses, presumably sort of tech type companies taking advantage of office space. But then there's also this question of remote work, et cetera. So I think with, with that, those kinds of goals, I do see there's like a thematic connection between those. With respect to the sort of the list of work programs that filter off of this, I know that this is supposed to be coming, but can you give a sense of like what, what a program around that might potentially look like, just to kind of understand how exactly you're thinking these filter into actual work streams?
Well, yeah, I think the intent of those, that text that's in chapter two is not, it's really to kind of set the stage for policies and programs that come much later in the document. I think when you get into the land use element or the economic vitality element, for example, you'll see policies that are pivoting off of that analysis that happens in chapter two. Really, that's kind of a roll up of everything else in the plan. So, you know, issues around the future of retail or the future of office space and the deeper dive happens in the elements themselves later on. And I think to some extent, the connections happen there too. I know in putting this together, there's a lot of cross referencing between policies because there are these threads that tie all of these elements together. tie all of these elements together. And so you may find a policy about office space and economic vitality that is, you know, underneath it says, see also policy, whatever in community design or in land use, because every, there are all of these connections that flow through the document. And I think we've tried to build those um throughout the plan.
So just to better understand that, so what, what you're really saying is that there's kind of a uh, an alphabet soup that someone could play with to, to basically pull together an argument for something, but there's not like a uh, there's not like a a, a nice sort of pre, preset program that's, that's tied into that.
Well, what I would say is that the, when the, when we're finished, this plan would benefit from an index. Um, because to some extent, what you're, I think what you're describing uh can the best way to address that is to say, here are all the places this topic area is addressed throughout this plan. And that really, and you know, and it could just, they're hyperlinks basically where you can go to other parts of the document and find out how um, you know, the, when you, when you take a natural resources lens, what does this look like? When you take a um, you know, uh noise lens, what does it look like? So it's, it's really different. Um, you know, how, how do these issues connect?
Yeah, because I think that, that relates to like forest management and like safety with fire. I mean, I think there's a lot of interconnected dots with that and like encampments for parks and rec. There's just um, I mean, that's just one example, but there's, there's a whole web of issues that start to become interrelated.
So if I may add to Commissioner Samutzi's question, I, I think one of the other kind of premises behind a general plan, and this is a this is a source of, I guess, a lot of confusion over the years with, with every community about general plans. A general plan has ver- has varying competing interests inherently embedded in the plan. So you'll read the land use element and it promotes certain land uses. You'll read the housing element, it'll promote housing. You'll read the conservation element, it'll ask you to balance all that and protect environmental resources. So there's not one formulaic uh equation that will get you to the outcome, but it's a set of policies that decision makers, planning commission, council can use to weigh in making their decision and what outweighs it. Cause every project will have things that it's a hundred percent consistent with, some things that it's somewhat consistent with and some things that it's not. And just because it doesn't have one, doesn't, does not make it um, not an approvable project, or just because it's consistent with most of them, doesn't make it an approvable project.
That makes sense.
That was great. Thank you. I think Commissioner Privatoli has been wanting to ask a question.
Yeah, uh, actually along the same lines, I was wondering how uh the plan may influence changes to um 101 and 580 uh that I think are controlled by the state. Um, specifically an example is like, you know, when those um uh freeways will have to be protected from sea level rise. Um, for instance, will the state take into consideration the general plan? How does that interplay work?
Yeah, I think, um, well, we will get to the mobility element uh at, at the next meeting and there's the whole discussion in there about the 580 101 interchange and the, the uh, the ramp connector project. Um, there is some policy direction, as you say, it's a Caltrans project. Um, but you know, I think what, what the city has done in its general plan is say, here are our priorities and our expectations for this project. And essentially when Caltrans looks to uh consistency with local policies as part of its process, it will look at the general plan to make that determination. I, I see Paul is here. I don't know if you want to add to that.
I do, and that's a really good question, because we are grappling right now with a project that's being promoted by TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin, for this new uh 101 I-580 connector. And we made it clear that we are working on a general plan update and one of the critical issues that we had separating land use and, and all of these other issues is particularly sea level rise in that area. Because that area is very susceptible to sea level rise. And we've indicated that we expect that whatever they come up with is going to follow whatever we present in terms of our policies and programs in the general plan. So thank you for bringing that up. And I would just wanted to make sure and chime in on that fact. So and by the way, it's both TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin and Caltrans. They're the lead, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Hill, yeah, please.
Yeah, uh Barry, if you could, um uh, you mentioned earlier, of course, this is a policy document and I think it was one of the uh, letters that had come in pointed this out. Um, which is a selection of verb, and you did talk about this, so that some language is very mandatory, like shall. And uh, other is a little softer, more like consider or explore. Can you characterize a little bit, you know, as you went through and, and language was selected, um, characterize mandatory versus less mandatory, if you will. Um, is there a, is there like a, a process or a framework as you walk through um the document to say, this section had more mandatory language versus um, language that was saying softer?
Um, yeah, I think it depends a little bit on, on state law also. There are certain things where we, we don't have a choice. Essentially, we're, we're required to plan for certain activities and uses and densities uh where we we, we make it mandatory. There are other cases where there may be unanimous agreement or, or just tremendous consensus around an issue where we're going to say require. Um, you know, the, and then there are other areas where there, there is either a need for more flexibility or there are differences of opinion, or everything has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Uh, and it's very context-driven. And I think we need to just, you know, this is part of the process of building a plan is evaluating what's the right verb to use. Um, and there's rarely agreement on whether it's going to be an encourage or, or a, a um, require. And you know, so you end up with things like strongly encourage or uh, where feasible, require. Uh, so you know, there are all kinds of nuances and um, yeah, you know, wordsmithing uh exercises that happen when a plan is, is put together. Um, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, in my experience, there there's, there are often, um, I would say the development sector tends to prefer the more flexible language and the neighborhoods tend to prefer the more mandatory language. Just, you know, in, in my 35 years of doing this, that's been my experience. Oh.
Yeah, uh, good question. Uh, Paul, yeah, please.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add one fact to that, because the shall and the should, those were very important words in the past two general plans. And one other distinction is a lot of the shals that you see in some of these policies are also linked back to our environmental review thresholds uh like for wetland protection and historically for level of service for traffic. And they all, and they're all linked back to the thresholds that we put in our general plan EIR that we hold projects to when we review them. So there's some distinction there having to do with SEQA. So I just wanted to try and mention that as well.
No, thank you. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Paul, for the characterization.
Yeah, great questions. And Paul, good, good reminder of the uh, the SEQA component that is tied to this discussion. So I think the, the phrasing of it now, the policy discussions that ultimately get boiled down into actual projects. So much of this has to do with that, this, the SEQA limitations or ramifications as to how something is drafted or puts together now. Anyone else? I think these are really great initial questions before we invite the public to join us. No? Okay, thank you. So I will, uh, Rafi, if you're ready, we'll open this uh public hearing up for any public comment.
I think that's my cue. Yes, if there's uh anyone on the conference call, which it looks like there's three people who've called in that wishes to provide public comment on this item, please press star nine to virtually raise your hand. That'll let us know you want to speak. Once it is your turn, you will hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. At that time, you can press star six to unmute yourself. You can then speak, introduce yourself, and you'll be allotted three minutes to provide your comments. While I wait for participants, see if anyone presses star nine, um, I'll also request that uh any public comments be submitted, submitted through the YouTube live chat for this item. Uh, we've already received a uh fair amount of comments, so I'm going to start with the YouTube live comments first, while we wait for the, any phone-in comments that may be coming in. So first comment is from Laura Silverman. I am a 16-year resident of Terra Linda in the 2040 draft plan sub-paragraph J. It is stated that the stat- status of Northgate Mall should be preserved and strengthened as a significant tax generator. Does this apply to any other areas of the city? Can you please address this during this meeting? Thank you. Next comment is from Claire Hallenbeck. Uh, neighborhoods element, the Northgate Mall is dying and has been for years. The last thing we need is for it to be expanded. It should be targeted to the community. Neighborhoods element, we need to make it strategically smaller, revitalized and add housing to increase the customer base. I think the Northgate Mall property would generate more income for the city with property taxes rather than sales taxes, which points to added housing. I definitely think Northgate would be wildly successful and profitable, but it should not be singled out as preserving the sales tax element. Scott Freyrick, uh, North Santoraf has several Eichler houses and these neighborhoods need to be preserved in general plan 2040. Uh, Susan Coleman, um, as an 18-year resident of Terra Linda, we need to re-envision Northgate Mall as a vibrant town center, offer the community housing services, retail, restaurants and um events, et cetera. Regina Crutchmer, uh, I've been a resident of Terra Linda for 50 years and would like to see the area of our Northgate Mall as a vibrant town center that would benefit present residents and future residents and appropriate housings as well as commerce services in general. This is a vibrant neighborhood. Thank you. Sorry, I'm still getting a few coming in here, so I'm trying to consolidate them. Um, Pam Reeves, great job overall. Please add on PDF page 29, two dash two of the plan, first paragraph in the looking back historical context, quote, "May we do right by this meowak land we, we occupy," end quote. N2 and A and B, so neighborhoods element two A and B seem to be inconsistent and perhaps unhelpful as a guide. Shall no- shall new development not increase noise le- noise level by 3 dB? Or does it follow table nine dash two? Please, um nor- please, Northgate Mall as a remove the tax generating source or expanding the mall. This general plan should not preempt the PDA that many of us supported. Uh, Laura Perrini, um, I second Regina Cr- Crutchmer's comment sentiments. And uh Shirley Fisher, uh wording in general plan 2040, particularly regarding Northgate Mall, should not preempt decisions to be made through PDA community-based planning processes. And then um Chris Hart, lifelong resident of Santoraf. I'm really half, uh, I'm really half-staff has taken this on this, taken this on. The future is bright for Santoraf. Very good. So uh, we now have uh some checking the phone lines. There are four callers in, but I do not see if anybody ha- is raising their hand. So if you'd like to provide public comments via the phone line, now is the time and you can indicate your desire to provide public comments by pressing star nine to raise your hand virtually. So we'll give that a minute. If there's any other public comments on YouTube live chat, now is the time to enter them. Okay, it looks like we have one caller here so far that's raised their, a couple callers here are raising their hand. So I'm going to go ahead with the first one. Once I um allow you to talk, you can unmute yourself by pressing star six. And please make sure that if you have another device streaming the YouTube live, to have that volume down so you don't get a feedback loop. So here comes the first caller.
Hi Rafi, this is Kate Powers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm a member of the 2040 uh steering committee, um representing environmental um interests. And I just wanted to thank Barry and Paul and the um staff. I thought it was a really great process. I thought that um, the process also helped to integrate the different stakeholders' values in reaching um a document that to a large extent reflects the community's vision. I appreciate the questions that the planning commission has had so far, because um I think that um, while there are um competing goals in a general plan, that a general plan for the most part should present um clear policy directions. And from um, and I'm hoping that the um, planning commission can help uh steer that um a little bit more. Um, from my perspective, I, I think that um environmental planning is often framed in terms of um mitigating impacts. And we've seen recently with state housing laws and um tran- transportation infrastructure um laws coming down that um SEQA is being um streamlined more and more. So I'm asking that the planning commission ask that um um, especially in land use, that we could, uh, we could incorporate in the land use goal, for example, um well-managed growth to say protecting environmental quality will be an objective in land use planning. In some way, we need the plan to integrate um envi- protecting the environment that we have, the natural resources we have, whether it's um water and wa- uh protection from wildfire, protection of communities that are being, going to be um affected by sea level rise, et cetera. And my last um quick comment is just that um, the general plan um the zoning codes and um other land use regulations are subordinate to the general plan and must be consistent with the general plan. So this document as a policy document, it is really important that we um have, have as much clear policy direction as possible. Thank you.
And here we have another caller here that um I will uh now allow to talk. So once you hear the message on your phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. And again, remember to turn off any other devices that are maybe streaming this uh meeting.
Good evening. Uh, this is Bill Carney uh with Sustainable Santoraf. Uh, and like Kate, I also served on the general plan steering committee. Um, very productive process. Um, I noticed in some of the correspondence uh for tonight's meeting, uh, there was a concern about uh, the uh transit, transit-oriented development. Uh, that is an important concept in the land use element as well as the um, the climate change element. And I just wanted to say that um, you know, we have an opportunity uh over time to uh evolve the uh suburban communities that we have uh in a more walkable uh and bikeable and indeed transit-served uh direction. Um, that rely less on cars while still, uh, of course accommodating cars. Um, so I think that's the vision that's laid out here. And I think if you read the plan carefully, you'll see a lot of balancing language. There was a lot of discussion back and forth. Um, and I'm thinking particularly of language about cost-benefit analysis, et cetera, as improvements are made or decisions are made uh related to transit uh oriented developments. So there were various points of view represented on the committee and I think they uh were balanced in the final product. Um, you know, we, actually, what I think we were striving for are communities that that build on and are more like the traditional walkable town centers um and villages that historically were uh in Marin uh prior to the car becoming uh dominant, um, you know, 60, 70 years ago. Um, so we can create very livable communities um while accommodating cars uh along with other ways of, of getting around. Um, I also wanted to mention that I'm hopeful, given the number of months that this is going to take, um both uh with your alert uh approval process and then the council itself, that there will be time to integrate um some additional charts or to replace some of the charts related to greenhouse or to replace some of the charts related to greenhouse gas goals and solutions that are in the plan now. And to align those with the recently adopted goals and solutions for greenhouse gases in, in drawdown Marin, which is a county wide process involving San Rafael and all the other jurisdictions. And it has, you know, somewhat more proactive goals than are embodied in our climate action plan at the moment. So I'm hoping that those things can be brought into alignment in the several months that we have to finalize the, the general plan. And then finally, kind of along those same lines, the Marin Grand Jury right now has asked the city to respond to a fairly aggressive call to action on climate adaptation. I say aggressive, but it's, it's, you know, needs to happen, longer every do. And, you know, this, this relates to sea level rise, wildfire, heat events, all sorts of climate impacts air quality. And I'm hopeful that the city will respond to that, drawing upon some of the very good work that is embodied in the general plan. So again, that response to the grand jury will be in alignment with, with the work put into the general plan. And that'll result, I think, in a very productive process county wide. So thank you very much and look forward to your discussion.
And we got, we got a couple more chat comments that came in. Actually, one more. This is from Roger Smith. I was a member of the steering committee for general plan two thousand and forty and two thousand and twenty. I find it helpful to remember nothing in the general plan is etched in stone. Everything can be changed or revised periodically. And it looks like we have one more phone in caller. So I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to speak. When you hear the tone on your phone plus star six to unmute yourself. And again, remember to have your other device that's streaming it turned down so you don't get a feedback loop.
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is David Smith. I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. And first of all, I'd just like to say, great job Barry, great job steering committee, great job staff. This was a huge undertaking and it's really appreciated the, the level of detail that this general plan goes into. Responsible Growth of Marin did submit a letter to the committee, so I would ask that you actually all review that. But in particular, I, we're aware of the conflicts between the elements, but we're also a little bit concerned particularly about the specific plans that general plan two thousand and forty makes on Northgate Mall, requiring both it to be maintained as a tax base and also to be expanded. And the fact that this seems to be in conflict with the ongoing application for a PDA for this area. And it just seems to, the, the general plan seems to preempt the decision on the PDA in this, in this regard. So we'd just like the committee and staff to take that into account as they, as they continue to analyze this. Thank you.
Okay, so I see no more chat comments and no, no more phone comments. So if there's anybody else who'd like to provide a comment, now is the time. On the phone line, you'd press star nine to raise your hand. And on the chat comment box on YouTube live, you'd enter your comment in the chat feature. So while we wait, it looks like, okay, we got one more phone in caller here. So once I allow you to speak, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself. It looks like, okay, we got one more phone in caller here.
Hi, my name is Barbara Salzman.
Once I allow you to speak, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself. As a reminder, please turn your volume down on other devices so you don't get a feedback loop. Volume down on other devices so you don't get a feedback loop.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that, sorry. So. Can I just talk to you the, the screen?
Go ahead and say your comments. Volume is down for other devices so you don't get a feedback loop.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that, sorry. I don't, are you getting a feedback?
Go, go ahead and just say your comments.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know how to do that, sorry. Are you getting a feedback?
Okay, so I'm gonna put her on mute and allow her to turn off their other device.
Are you getting a feedback?
Okay, so any other chat comments at this time? Now is the time to enter them. Okay, so Barbara, if you had a chance, just go ahead and turn off your other device, the volume on your other device. And if you can't do that, just go ahead and say your comments. We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, I'm speaking into my phone. This is Barbara Salzman. I'm used to Zoom, so I don't. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking into my phone and I'm, I'm not used to speaking into the phone. So I, I will, I submitted a letter on behalf of Marin Audubon Society. And I will say the main point, which is my shock at seeing a reference in the Canalways discussion that the development should be economically viable for the site owners. And I've never, never seen such a thing in a, in the forty years I've been looking at general plan. So I hope that's removed and I will end this because it is echoing. And please look at my letter, which has some other points in it about wetlands and trees. Thanks, native trees, bye.
Okay, so. I see no other phone callers that raise their hand and there's no other chat comments at this time, Chair Mercado.
Great, thank you. Thanks for working with Barbara on that. Appreciate her getting her comments in. Okay, so I think we've got everybody. We will close the public comment at this time. We're gonna bring it back to the commission. And as I alluded to earlier, I think what makes the most sense is maybe take this chapter by chapter and then we can do a wrap up. I'm pretty flexible about this discussion, Barry. I'm actually gonna somewhat defer to you in terms of whether that's fine for you or if you want to maximize this conversation in any, any other capacity. But I just thought it would be a little easier for all of us to contribute. For now, I'm not gonna plan to do sort of a roll call or put you on the spot. I'd recommend we just try to volunteer. If we agree with others, we could just reiterate that or not say anything. There, it's interesting, there was a few common themes in that, that Northgate Mall. So Barry, maybe if that is in the discussion today, we can go into that and spend a little bit more time on that as well.
Sure, I'm happy to walk us through the chapters. I guess I, I did want to start by just acknowledging the comments that we just received and explaining a little bit about how we'll be handling responses, both to the written comments and the, the oral comments. And also if the commission wants to weigh in on any of those comments, you know, we would love to hear your, your thoughts and feedback on, and you know, both on, on the letters that came in earlier and on anything that we just heard. With respect to Northgate, I think the language that we included is a combination of what we heard from the property owners, what we heard from the community and the neighborhood organizations and what was in the previous Neighborhoods element. And certainly were amenable to making edits to that language. And I think we'll take the written comments and the verbal comments on making those adjustments very seriously. I don't particularly see any problems with making the edits that were requested. And certainly our intent is not to preclude and or, or predetermine any outcomes of the PDA process. So, so I think we can, we can certainly make those, those changes. And I, I do want to thank both Kate Powers and, and Bill Carney for their comments and also their contributions as steering committee members. I think we will be able to respond to most of the comments, both that Kate and Bill provided. Bill made some specific suggestions about updating the data to the extent that we can do that. I think where we have to be careful is if the data produces different environmental impacts. You know, we, we are doing an EIR that will be out for public review. So changing the metrics gets a little bit complicated. Once that document goes out and the SEQA impacts of GHG reductions and so forth are, are evaluated. But to the extent that we can accommodate that, we will. I, I did want to say something. There were a lot of letters that came in about tree protection. And I think, you know, the general plan does include some policy language about tree protection. And it does provide direction to amend the tree ordinance without getting into specific details about the diameter of, of trees and such. If the commission feels that that level of detail is, is warranted, we, we can look at that. That would be pretty unusual to include that level of detail in a general plan. Typically, the plan would provide direction to, as a follow up to, you know, revisit the, the requirements for tree protection or the findings without embedding that in the plan itself. I, I have seen exceptions to that, but in general, that's, that's not really what happens within the, the general plan. Although, you know, you certainly can be more proactive and aggressive in your policy language. That's an example of, of, you know, whether you want to use a should or a shall. Again, something we'll consider, just in general, our intent with the, with the, with the written comments is to come back to the commission in December with some, some revised language that responds to some of what we're hearing, both in writing and in, and through the oral comments. So with that, I guess I can segue right into the, the review of the plan unless the commission has any thoughts or feedback before I jump into that on those, on the public comments or anything else.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think it'd be good if anyone else does have any feedback or comments in particular to the public comments that were made.
I just have one comment about Northgate and maintaining it as, you know, a revenue generator for a tax base. I just, I, I just don't see that component and the housing component as mutually exclusive. And I think that we can work together as a community and as, within our governing bodies to make sure that the policies are written in such a way that we can support economic growth and still make it like a very pedestrian friendly place that's integrate, that has like housing integrated within it. I do think there's, there's obvious lot of anxiety and fear around how that's gonna work. But I think we're all like, we all, everyone's, everyone's heart seems to be in the right place. Like everyone seems to be wanting the same end. It's just how we get there. So, you know, I appreciate the public comments and the various letters. But we can work together to bolster the, like, as Barry says, modify the language and make sure that several goals are being met.
Yeah, Commissioner Pravatalli, go ahead, please.
Oh yeah, I've got a, a few responses to the public comments and I've just been taking notes. So I'll just do kind of like a, a rapid fire based on what was mentioned verbally and through the comments and from the letters. Yeah, starting with Northgate, I agree that, you know, I think it's important to ensure that we don't overly influence or preclude any findings from the PDA process. And I agree with what people have said about, you know, essentially having a tax base that includes both sales tax, but also importantly, property tax. I think that's gonna be a huge benefit to the community to improve, increase property taxes using Northgate. I also agree with the comment about expanding the mall. It seems, at least in the current climate, the current economic climate, that expanding the mall is not a good idea. And instead, mixed use development with a lot more housing is, is a better option. Just real quickly moving to trees. I actually really like the idea of including some more specific language about preserving trees and specifically redwoods over twelve inch, twelve inches in diameter. I understand it would be an anomaly with regard to other, you know, general plans. But I think this community is the type of community that really wants to preserve its trees. And frankly, I wouldn't stop necessarily at redwoods. I would look at, I think what other communities call, or we may also call heritage trees. These are trees that are original to the land. I know that I actually worked for the city of Menlo Park and I believe they had some ordinances around protecting oak trees that, some of, some of which were a thousand years old. So it'd be great if we could, you know, continue to do that. With regard to, you know, the Eichlers in Terre Linda, I have to say, just for the sake of full disclosure, I live in an Eichler, so I'm biased. But I think it is a good idea to, you know, strengthen or at least emphasize the preservation of Eichlers. And they're as close to the original form as they can be preserved. And also other related housing styles in Terre Linda like Alliance houses. I think it's a great idea. I know that the project drawdown is mentioned in the general plan. I was really happy to see that. I don't recall mention of the county general plan, but I think it would be a, a good idea to take a look at. The county general plan, as was recommended, as well, as well as project drawdown to see if there can be some synergies between our plan and those plans. Oh yeah, with regard to, I think we're gonna talk about mobility next time, but so I'll, I'll hold off on talking about mobility. And then finally, someone mentioned that they thought it would be good to acknowledge that we are using Mewoc land. And I feel like that is very important and particularly in this environment of diversity and inclusion. And, you know, acknowledging some of the, I would say discriminatory, some of the discriminatory history of San Rafael. I think it would be good to emphasize a, the fact that we are using Mewoc land. And to the caller's point that, you know, we should be good stewards of the land as they were for, I, I believe up to ten thousand years. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Pravatalli. Anyone else generally in response to the public comment before we try to walk our way through some of these chapters?
I just wanna, I forgot about the project drawdown. I just have, want to add that to my comments. Got you off Commissioner Hill, that I agree with that recommendation and Commissioner Pravatalli's response to that, that we should try to coordinate our efforts to make sure that we're meeting the county's goals.
Thanks, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, I think just on the two topic areas that are related to the correspondence we received, obviously there was a lot of tree correspondence. I think some of the correspondence actually provided some suggestive language. I think it's worth taking a look at it. Barry, I agree that if it were, if it were up to me, I would add in a specific call out for redwoods. I think some of them, some of the languages actually pushing toward just tree protection generally. I think it's, right now it talks about tree replacement. I think it's okay to put in additional language on tree. I think it's okay to put in additional language on tree protection. And then I think with respect to the Northgate, uh, language, I think at a minimum, it's, it's good to acknowledge that. I think we're just in, in the middle of, of, uh, of, of considering it. So I think it's, it's good to not be as prescriptive if that's possible. So I think I'm echoing what other people are saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Shoot, Commissioner Davidson.
Yeah, I, I'm disappointed I didn't get to hear Barbara's summary of the letter because that's the letter I can't find in my inbox. But, um, she's talking about canalways and conservation of the wetlands. And, uh, just not specific to that location, but in general, I am nervous. It's about prohibiting anything to do around wetlands because. We're in a changing world and we have an opportunity. Too innovative and, and I'm not saying I'm against the protect, an opportunity to enhance them. Maybe by relocating them and maybe by innovative ways in adapting to selevarize. So. Uh, I give this general plan, I. The changing world and that's. This is the general comment, um. As we always optimal. Um, wetlands and we have opportunities to enhance them. And, uh, same on, uh, drawdown. I think we have an opportunity to reference these other great research and documents. That the city has done and how to move more towards clean energy and. And all that, so. Just as a general comment. And again, coming from the, being a planning commissioner, that it, it'll be nice to have something to. Point to as we're reviewing projects that proponents can do in addition to their proposal. To, to meet these certain green energy goals. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Response to public comment? Hi, Rude.
Just have one, just one short thing. Um, I, there was one, there was one comment, I think, uh. It was made towards the end. Um, I think just a general discussion about metrics to measure success. I think that's actually. Something that I noticed was, was kind of lacking, um, within or across the general plan. I think it's important to, to call that out because, um, I think the lack of. Some form of tangible metric to, to define sort of what this specific thing is. Um, while we may right now trust everybody to have sort of the same kind of goal or intentions. I don't necessarily think that that's something that we should rely on the long term, particularly given how. The city is diversifying and there are some significant demographic sea changes that are happening. Um, so I, I, I do think that, and maybe this is also part of our discussion chapter by chapter later on. And maybe we can kind of, maybe for the other commissioners to kind of think about, um. With some of the things that you feel more passionately about, if you could also think about specific metrics that could be used. Um, as, as a way of measuring that as we, as we think through our next chapter, I think that might be helpful feedback for. Um, for the group as they, as they kind of pull this together.
Thank you. All right. Good initial points of conversation, I think. So my thought was just to keep the dialogue going. If people wanted to comment on initial chapters, we could literally start at the top at chapter one. And Barry, if there's anything that you would specifically like us to focus in on or sections that are of particular interest. Or maybe in response to some of the public comment, if this is where they may be that you want us to kind of really consider, this could be a ripe opportunity. But I, I think as a matter of order, if anyone has thoughts for improving this discussion, I'm also open to it right now before we jump into it. Go. Okie doke.
Great. Um, yeah, so the, uh, first chapter is essentially an introduction. I, I'm not sure. Uh, if there's anything missing or anything you feel like is, is, uh, is needed in this chapter that you're not getting. You know, we, we essentially talk about what the plan is, why we do a general plan. What the area is that, uh, that the plan covers. Uh, the difference between a goal, a policy and a program. Uh, we did add a full page on the fact that we're finishing this plan in a pandemic. I mean, this was kind of a think fast, uh, thing for us. We, we were pretty close to finishing the, the document with up. At least all the policies and, and then how to really, I think, um. Make some strategic changes in light of the, of COVID-19. And that's expressed here. And then a discussion of the planning process, um, and the overview of, of the document. So, uh, anything on chapter one that folks would like to comment on or questions or changes?
Uh, this is not a question, Barry. I, just a comment. I, I thought that this was well laid out, uh, to a layman. I will call myself a layman. Um, I thought that this was succinct and, and helped organize exactly as you said, to provide context of. Def- definition and what, um, this document was with respect to others. So I thought this was good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'm going to move on to chapter two. Uh, and this is, uh, again, the new chapter of the plan that lays out. A framework by talking about the issues that are driving change in the city. You know, again, it's, it's demographics, it's income inequality. And equity issues which really haven't been approached in a general plan at this level before. Uh, just the, the challenges of our real estate market to produce. Housing and high construction costs and land costs. I think the overall drive to change the way we develop and think about our, our suburban communities. Uh, focusing development in areas that are already developed essentially as opposed to going and developing greenfields. Um, trying to encourage less auto-dependent development. And then looking at some of the economic changes, particularly the. Decline in retail and what that means for the city. We heard a lot from our steering committee about the future of retail and, uh, the need to be cognizant of. What that means for our neighborhood centers, our malls, our downtown. The, the changing nature of transportation in the city. And if, if I, if we didn't write it in here, I will say this anecdotally, this is the hardest thing about the general plan is the. The fact that we, there's so much we don't know about how we're going to be traveling 20 years from now and planning for a future. Which in theory will have autonomous vehicles and, uh, no fossil fuel vehicles. It's, uh, you know, it really changes the game quite a bit. The climate change, uh, impacts on the plan and the way the plan is oriented around reducing GHG emissions and also. Adapting to a changing climate. It's not just about reducing greenhouse gases. It's also about. Hardening the city and essentially planning for the, um. The, the likelihood of increased wildfire and sea level rise. Uh, changes to technology mean if we, if we knew now what we knew 20 years ago. Um, sorry if we, yes, right. We knew 20 years ago what we knew now. Um. Fiscal constraints, I think, you know what, again, going back to the steering committee, there's a, a lot of emphasis on. Balancing the costs and benefits of. Of our, of our decisions and our programs and making sure that, that there was some. Conscious effort to think about what are we getting for what we're spending and is it worth it? And what are the benefits and costs and how do we quantify them? The forecasts, I think are self-evident. The, these are, um. A bag forecast. Essentially, we're not really going off in our own tangent and coming up with different forecasts than the regional forecasts. Uh, and then the guiding principles, I, um. Would say this was a, um, a long process to get to these principles. It was really the first six months of the steering committee's work. To develop these principles and they began as. Narrative text and they ended as a graphic. I think there was a feeling that a graphic. Told the story in a more compelling and easier to grasp way than three pages of text. So that, that's how we ended here. Uh, so I'll stop there and see if there are any comments or thoughts on this chapter that the commission would like to share. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I, I do have, um, just one, one quick, I guess, question or comment on that. I understand that this is meant to be sort of the, the high level kind of goal setting. And there's supposed to be some policy that kind of, um, derives from this. But I, I think that the, the nature of the change with regards to like retail going away, I, I think is kind of. Significant enough that I think it bears referencing and mentioning in terms of specific goals. Within this document. Now I know that economic vitality is for the next, um, section. So if it's being covered in that particular section, please stop me. Um, if it's not, I would say that this particular chapter should at least make some reference to some specific goals around. Identifying what are the new emerging industries that can replace the, the retail that's declining, um, to maintain that tax base. That, that way we're not having to be as prescriptive of saying like. Northgate Mall is a designated area to preserve sales tax when we can rely on other methods of. Um, growing businesses of different kinds that are more sustainable and new industries of, you know, across the, across the city, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's excellent feedback. Um, I'm not sure that it would be here in this chapter. But it would be in land use and it would be in economic vitality. Um, and I should point out that a lot of what you're seeing in the general plan is based on existing conditions reports. That were done over the last two to three years that answer some of those questions. We, um. I don't think in the interest of trying to keep the plan, it's already very long. It was, you know, to, to try and not embed a lot of that information into the plan. Um, we do have these background reports and there was a, I think about a 40-page report done on. Um, the, the city's economy and it talked through the future of retail and looked at some options for. Uh, repurposing older neighborhood centers and so forth. So some of that is in that background document rather than in the plan. But your point is well taken. I think it's really important.
So maybe just in a minimum, not necessarily even a large discussion, but perhaps just a specific call to action with regards to that.
Good points. Uh, Commissioner Privatoli, please, be at your hand now.
Oh yeah, I had two comments. Um, actually was going to save this one for the mobility section in our next meeting about the plan. Uh, but I'll just mention it since you brought up transportation. And, you know, I imagine this may already be covered in the mobility's chapter. But I think it's super important to, um, facilitate electric vehicle infrastructure. Uh, and, you know, not only at the level of housing, um, and buildings and whatnot for the electric vehicles to be charged. Uh, but also, you know, at retail centers, offices and, um, to prepare for. An expansion of the, um, electric infrastructure more widely, the distribution system. Um, it's likely will need more substations, for instance, uh, to bring in more power in order to charge the vehicles. So just a quick comment on that. Um, also, uh, you, I really like the graphic, uh, that describes the general plan guiding principles. I think it's excellent. I think it's a great way to represent, um, everything that we like to see or that we are seeing in the general plan. Um, under opportunity for all, I just wanted to, uh. Find out if at some point in the general plan, I apologize if I missed this, but there is a discussion of. Um, high-speed internet access for all, uh, people across San Rafael. I actually don't know, um, whether or not, for instance, fiber is available, um, to all people in San Rafael. I know that, um, you know, a few years, a couple decades ago, I guess now, uh, in probably three decades. Uh, in Palo Alto, uh, when I was living there, they installed a fiber ring. Um, that, you know, a lot of people think was very helpful in helping that community. Um, become what it is today with regard to technology. And, and frankly, I don't know if we have a fiber ring like that, but, uh, I think it would be good to, you know, explore that idea. Including the general plan if needed. And, and then finally, um, I was going to touch on this later, but I might as well just mention it now with regard to housing. Um, I think the pandemic has, you know, demonstrated that many of us. Uh, can work from home and prefer working from home. And so, um, I think it's, I think it's important to. I don't know exactly how to do this, but somehow consider supporting more home offices. And live-work, um, locations. Uh, I can tell you, you know, just from personal experience, I would love to have a home office. I don't. I'm sitting, um, uh, you know, maybe a few of us are, yeah. And so, um. And I don't know if that's within the scope of the general plan or, or whatnot, but, um. Be great if somehow we were a community that could respond to the pandemic. Respond to climate change by reducing, uh, you know, commuting. By somehow facilitating more live-work spaces and home offices. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Commissioner Saudi, please.
Yeah, um, first I wanted, um, to reiterate the other commissioners' comments of, um. Just how well put together this document is in this chapter. It really outlines, um. The purpose and some of the higher level, um, thoughts behind it really well. Um, I was first looking at the demographic section and, um, it, it kind of goes on. Um, to show how the demographics, the graphics have changed, um, a paragraph or two. In this location and also under income inequality and equity. Um, in regards to how we got there. I know there's, um, policies, housing policies, um. And, um, other factors that have led to how the demographics have really opened up. Like for instance, um, like I'm the second owner of my home. I wouldn't have been able to purchase it as a first owner, being a person of color or a woman. So, um, I'm in like a. It, it was like a covenant neighborhood. So I think that, you know, given the, um, social, political climate we're in. And, you know, even the comments about being on Mewoc land, really addressing how we got here. Um, and, you know, from the eighties, from, I guess, when. Some of the records are being kept and what this document is citing to how, where we are now. And then where we hope to see ourselves. Cause like, you know, I know I bring it up, I brought it up in other meetings. But, um, it's similar to what we're looking at, at, you know, like CRFL city schools and other school districts within our city. Um, and how, um, we are segregated as, as school dish, as schools within the districts. And I think we can, we can likely say the same thing about our neighborhoods and, um. I think having an underlying understanding of that, even if it's short, um, would be helpful to include in that document. Commissioner Privatoli mentioned, um. You know, addressing where we are in terms of like transitioning from. Working, you know, commuting and having this be a bedroom community of San Francisco. To, um, having more of an integrated, um, kind of work-life situation now. And I think we're going to be entering, um, a new era of hybrid work. And I don't know if this is the right chapter to be discussing this, but I wanted to bring it up while it was fresh. Um, I think even like the Northgate Mall area, having, having the idea of like. You know, not just retail, but like. Um, some sort of, um, co-working space for seven kind of activation of, of those centers. And, um, really provide for the enough economic vitality and help solve some of the housing and the greenhouse gas. So those, those things all kind of come together. Um, but really that was, that was all I had to say about that, this first chapter.
I, I would, um, I would challenge as well in the demographics. I think what's missing in this for the general overview is that the segregation of the city and the fact that the demographics. You can put the numbers out there, but without identifying where those folks are in relationship to the city. It's kind of missing a little bit of the, uh, what I think is sort of a. It's part of what the city is. There are certain areas that look certain ways and other areas that.
it's part of what the city is. There are certain areas that look certain ways and other areas that don't. So whether that fits in here or not, maybe in the housing element, but I think it's a, it's a challenging issue that m- maybe something to to consider. And I really like the graphic as well. One of the things that jumped out at me was the foundation of going to it now. I don't know if it was done intentionally or if it hasn't been thawed, but is that the hierarchy of our foundation? Cause it starts with open space preservation and work it works its way. To me, when you lay out a foundation and you set forth, you know, one through whatever, it's a question of, you know, is that the most important or not? So maybe over analyzing it, but uh is that what it's intended to be? That that's our, that's our number one. Somebody will probably think about that. But I I thought it was a great chapter. I think it's a great addition. Kind of opens up a few more discussions that other chapters don't have. Before we move on, anyone else? Or Barry, do you have any responses or?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, with respect to Commissioner Privatalli's comment about um fiber and internet access, that is addressed in both the infrastructure element and um actually in the equity, diversity, inclusion element. And I, so there there are policies about uh increasing access for for all residents. Um, and I I thought the comments, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Saudi, your comment uh was was really good and something we can definitely address through the edits to the demographic section. I I also will point out that at the next meeting, we'll be talking about uh the equity, diversity and inclusion element, which is a new element of the plan. Um, and you know, there, there's uh an opportunity in that element to take this plan to another level that we haven't really seen before in a general plan. Anywhere in in the county, really, um, I not gonna say anywhere in the Bay Area, but um it's a new element. It's a new state requirement. We haven't, I mean, there's really none of the the um Bay Area cities uh have really done this yet. So we're kind of um on the leading edge here and have an opportunity through that element to um to set, kind of set the mark um in in the narrative. So the story we tell there is really important.
Yeah, thank you. And we're, we're the county seats. I think, you know, leading my example is is an important thing to do here.
Hey Barry, this is kind of a random question, but how does, will the EIR include some sort of reference to that section of the equity? I mean, can it or?
Well, I'm just thinking through, um not, there, there really aren't that many policies in that section that are mitigating environmental impacts um per se. So uh, I haven't seen any references to those policies yet. I mean, as we're, we are in the process of reviewing the EIR and they're generally citing, you know, conservation and climate change policies and so on. I haven't seen any reference to those as mitigating policies. It's a really interesting question.
Yeah, I could see how it could potentially apply. I mean, yeah, there's some arguments and anyways, that's interesting. Okay. Anyone else on chapter two? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Barry.
No, I was gonna actually just move us on to chapter three, if that's okay.
Fine by me.
Uh, and chapter three, um, I mean, we could spend a long time on chapter three. It's the land use element. Uh, one thing I I'll say about this is that we have come to the commission before with the land use map. I don't know that all of you were on the commission when we did that. It was in February of this year. Um, but we did walk through the proposed map changes and the categories at that time. Um, I don't know if if there's any interest in revisiting that, um but the, uh, it it is a really important part of the plan. I mean, it is when you talk about what's mandatory in this plan, that that's the law. That general plan map essentially lays out what uh what densities are permitted in the city and what land uses are permitted in the city. So um, you know, the category definitions are are pretty important. Um, there have been some changes from the previous general plan, but they're mostly consolidation of categories and um they don't change the zoning of the property within those areas. There will continue to be multiple zones within some of these areas, but they're represented on the map with a single category. Um, kind of working backwards a little bit, the front part of the land use element is, I think it's intended to be more just framing the um the policies and then um beyond the the land use category descriptions. The, a lot of the language in this element is carried forward from general plan twenty twenty. Um, the basic structure, I think, is is the same. Uh, as I look through what we've changed, you know, there's a new policy about land use and climate change and recognizing the link between those two. There uh is a little more information on on transfer of development rights, which I think is a concept that there's a lot of interest in, particularly with respect to sea level rise and looking at opportunities for uh transferring development rights from um flood-prone areas to upland areas. Um, the floor area ratio map and the height map. Again, I mentioned at the beginning, those are changing in the downtown area, but not outside of downtown and will be back to the commission, um hopefully in December with a kind of a deeper dive into the downtown precise plan. Uh, so I don't know that there's a lot on that, but one thing I uh I do, let me point out this on, there's table three point two, which is height bonuses. This essentially is a, is a, uh, you know, what additional height you can get on a building based on uh certain community benefits like affordable housing. And a lot of, again, a lot of that is carried over from the previous plan. I I mentioned in my introductory remarks, the issue of uh industrial land and whether the city should relax some of its uh policies on allowing other uses, namely housing in industrial areas. I think there was a pretty strong consensus to not do that um by our steering committee. Uh, and actually by the economists that put uh the background report together as well. I think recognizing that it's a limited resource and if you're not gonna find those services in that land supply in San Rafael, you've got to go a long way and probably over a bridge um to to get um, you know, those uses that may be priced out of the city if that area begins to turn residential. So looking toward the last goal in this chapter on neighborhoods, a lot of this is carried forward from general plan twenty twenty. So uh I would, I will stop there and see if there are any specific questions or comments on uh any of those topics in chapter three.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, Commissioner Privatalli, please.
Yeah, um, with regard to the map of the the zoning map, uh, general plan twenty forty, land use map, excuse me. You know, a lot of, you know, a good portion of the um particularly diversified zoning down in the you know, uh, I guess this is, oh, it's around the canal area. And um, and also around um northern San Rafael is, you know, obviously going to be subject to flooding uh because of sea level rise. And I was wondering, is the intention to um try to rezone other areas of the city to compensate for the potential loss of land in those areas?
So I think what we're uh doing in general plan twenty forty is we're setting the stage for an adaptation plan. And um also the priority development area that's been designated in that area will have uh, you know, more detailed planning. Um, I think that's, that's an option. That's something that'll be explored in the future is looking for um the areas that we may, you know, through that future planning process determine aren't suitable. And I, you know, I I'm glad Paul tuned in, cause I I'm I'm hoping he'll add something to this. We've designated a sea level rise overlay line on this map, which shows the areas that are going to be um subject to tidal flooding in twenty fifty. And that's intended to start this discussion. I don't think we're ans- we're, you know, we're gonna have all the answers in general plan twenty forty, but we're, we're essentially identifying a challenge and uh some planning tools that are gonna be developed in the next few years to answer that, that question. Um, Paul, did you wanna?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I know we haven't reached chapter eight yet under safety and uh resili- resilience, but I do wanna chime in on this particular topic. Barry is correct. It's a grander, uh, there's two things going on with regard to this topic. One is we do indeed have an overlay that we're recommending. It's much, it's much like our wetland overlay district or hillside overlay district that we've had in place for thirty years now. In this particular case, it's dealing with sea level rise. But it's a combination of things. One is looking at the bigger picture for adaptation for an area. Um, I think the last thing we want to do is um have to forfeit certain areas of development that currently provide housing or very important um businesses and industry in our community. So it's gonna be more uh focused on um basically uh shoring up those areas where we can, rather than retreating. Retreating would be to abandon those areas. The other part of this is if you're gonna, if you see in those, in the uh policies that we have in that chapter, a recommendation to also include a requirement for a higher uh minimum building height elevation, if you're gonna build in some of those areas. So that in combination with maybe a grander resilient plan will help, but um, it's a tough question because it's a big issue and there, there isn't any one-size-fits-all solution. And we're gonna have to work through the adaptation plan to take a look at what we can do on a site-by-site basis versus something grand for a whole area. So Commissioner Privatalli, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's really kind of where we are with this.
That sounds good. Thank you. Yeah, I I've got some more comments, but I'll save it for the uh following chapter on the subject. Great, thank you.
I- if I may follow up with the Paul's comment. One of the things that I think is of um first general understanding of the public, when we have these maps on sea level rise and which areas it impacts, I think people, their first question is where are you gonna move all these businesses and where are you gonna move all these people? And I think it's an educational a component where we have to teach the public that ad- this is exactly what an adaptation means. And definitely it's not a cookie cutter solution, as Paul mentioned. There has to be in the near future, hopefully, very specific studies for very specific communities and what specific solutions are better for those areas. And we, we have a lot to learn on the on on how other countries, uh how innovative they they have been. And we, we definitely think of ourselves in the US as the leading country in these issues, but we're not. We're definitely not. So that's something that I hope to see and as a follow-up to this general plan, that and how are we gonna deal with these communities?
Thank you. Good points. Commissioner Hill, please.
I know we want to be efficient with time, I want to bring up two things with uh land use. First of all, I'm, uh, I know I mentioned it uh back, Barry, when you last addressed uh the commission. I am excited to see form-based code uh come to life um as we go forward. I was surprised to not see it used but once inside of the land use chapter. Definitely much more prominent in the neighborhood and and further down. Um, but I thought it could, it deserved, maybe some here, maybe further up in the document. Um, just cause I think it's a pretty um uh exciting uh, or at a very least, a change that that's worthy of calling out. Um, this is more of just a general, I know that, general comment, I know that correspondence uh from the um, now I'm going to need to be very specific. The Terre Linda Homeowners Association, they were pretty prescriptive in providing, I think, a lot of land use recommendations. I'm not gonna inventory them and go through them specifically, but how do we treat those types of very prescriptive, like I want you to you know, consider this specific language? What, what is our process for going through some, some of the correspondence that came in that are very specific? Just wanna understand how we, how we process those.
Uh, yeah, I think it depends on the, on the specific comment. I think if it's, if it's internally consistent with other parts of the general plan, we would general, we would accept the comment. Um, if it creates some conflict or potential, uh you know, if it goes, if it goes against, I think the direction we got from our steering committee, we would bring it to the commission. We probably would draft some alternative language that uh reaches a balance between what's being requested and what it says now, if needed, and bring that to you. Uh, that's part of that December meeting would be a chance to walk through uh proposed edits to the plan and and think about uh whether we've, we've got it right or whether there's still uh some change. Like, we can't accept every single uh request. I think if we did, we'd have an internally inconsistent plan and it would be in conflict. So it's really a, it's a balancing of words and and uh and language there. And that, that kind of big picture internal consistency is our guiding light here.
Completely. Yeah, I think this was mentioned earlier um at the very beginning of the meeting, but I just, I thought it was there was uh so much language that came out of that particular correspondence. I think it was just worth just making sure that there is a, there is a process and it is considered. So thank you for walking through it again.
And and I would just add, uh, Commissioner Hill, that if there are, there are specific comments that you've heard or read that um you and the commission feel strongly about, that should be considered. I mean, that direction would be helpful, so we could go back and kind of analyze it. Helps us focus as well in terms of what the commission may feel. So if you think something rises, that's worth it and the rest of the commissioners also agree, then it's something we can look at.
Yeah, I think maybe my comments are are connected and I'll just go um and make the dotted lines a little bit more clear. I did think that form-based code addressed a lot of what went on in some of the specifics in terms of, some of them felt more like zoning recommendations. I thought form-based code could answer a lot of that with respect to um, you know, applying uh regulations to 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 uh uh, you know, renovations or um, you know, other, other things that I thought form-based code can actually address more uh holistically. Barry.
Just one, one question on the, on the land use policy goals. I know we had some prior discussion about some of the new legislation that has been passed over the last year. With regards to creating streamlined processes for developments, particularly multifamily, particularly in in transit lanes, et cetera. Um, I know that there was, from a design perspective, an objective set of standards that could be used as, you know, part of the process of evaluating it without necessarily burdening it with a, a full environmental review process. And at the time that those passed, so this was maybe four, five, six months ago, I'd also brought up the, the thought about uh objective standards from um, from sort of the other general plan type of land use perspective as well. Um, so things like, you know, ensuring that uh we don't fast-track developments that, you know, from a infrastructure perspective, for example, we couldn't necessarily sustain or support or that um from a, from a business perspective, kind of clashed with some of the other broader business goals that we were trying to to bring into the city. To, and I think this is where the um, the specific metrics might be somewhat helpful, because I know that um some of those state laws also specify the objective standards can be derived from general plan document. I think they're called out general plan documents as well as like city charters um among some other documents. And I wondered if it uh what has been considered or if it would be worthwhile to look at sort of the goals within the land use section as an opportunity to um kind of put some more explicit language that could be used as objective standards when going through these more expedited processes, so that we still have those checks, but we don't burden it necessarily with the, the typical uh project planning process.
Yeah, I, I think the place you're really going to see that is in the downtown precise plan. I mean, one of the things about this general plan is that it really directs, consciously directs development to downtown San Rafael. And that plan is essentially being drafted it with, with the objective, with SB thirty-five and the other uh state requirements in mind with those in the, objective standards embedded in the plan and knowing that those, well, th- those all need to to line up. Um, so I, I, I would say when we get the precise plan, you'll see a lot more focus on that. And that, I, Paul, I don't know if you wanted to add anything or raffi to that um.
Yeah, uh, that's a real good point that was brought up. And as you guys know, we are working separately on objective standards to comply with Senate Bill thirty-five. And we've also made a commitment that we would introduce a by-ride process for one hundred percent affordable housing projects. And Ali Judasey is working on that. Some of what you're talking about, Commissioner, is are things that I think we're gonna also have to build into our housing element when we update the housing element. Of course, a grander upgrade, uh, uh, update of that housing element is not planned as part of this general plan update. But it is, it is um due to commence very quickly here. due to commence very quickly here. So those are things that we're gonna have to remember to make sure to build into the housing element. But on the sideline, we're still required to comply with them for state law. So Barry is correct. There's some things in the downtown precise plan that will uh address that, but more importantly, in the housing element.
But that buy-ride um process hasn't really been um, like nobody's submitted applications for that in, in the city yet. So that's something we have to prepare for happening, but it seems as though like if somebody were to apply for that, the the rules are so stringent that they're almost not gonna
Correct.
You know, try to engage that process.
Right. Well, we've been crossing our fingers that we don't get an application. Otto did. And um, but um, Ally is working with our consultant to get those uh objective standards completed fairly quickly. She might be able to provide a status report. I know that's a sideline from the general plan, but it's relevant to the questions that were asked here. You're on mute, Ally.
Yeah, I just realized that. Um, you're right. Yes, we are, we, Paul's right. We're, we're crossing our fingers, but there are so many different restrictions that uh make it difficult for developers to propose a buy-ride project. Um, but we are working with a consultant right now to bring those forward and um, we're expecting those those to come forward soon. Um, and you know, hopefully, like probably I'm thinking beginning of twenty twenty-one. Um, so, but, but we recognize, we know that at any time we could get an application. So that is something that is on our list of priorities to get accomplished soon.
I would like to mention, we have, and you have been party to reviewing a buy-ride project already. The one ninety Mill Street project, Homeward Bound several months back. Now, those were sort of watered down objective standards. We're doing something more uh specific than what you saw then. Uh, but in that particular case, that was a pilot for this type of uh process, so.
That's correct. Yeah.
Termer Kato, I have a, a couple of comments on chapter three.
Yeah, please.
Um, um, two comments. One is the short-term rental um section and um I, I agree that the wording around it is, is going in the right direction. Um, but just to mimic um Commissioner Samutti's comments, it doesn't seem like there's any real like objective criteria that would be um used to like monitor the effectiveness in regulating the short-term rental um you know, registration and collection. I think it's like at the T O Ts or I forget what it's called, but where they, you recollect taxes on them. And um, it, it does correspond with the other section that I had um comments on, which is innovative housing types. Um, a, as we see like a lot of the shelter in place happening. Um, eight, the applications, I'm sure you guys are seeing the number of applications for ADUs and the amount of people that are wanting to build ADUs skyrocket. And i- it's all kind of intertwined with like live work, ADUs, short-term rental. Um, the way that we are living and working is is all going through a transformation. And I think some of the things that we're dealing with presently will be, you know, there'll be long-lasting effects of it. And so um, I'd just like to say that if we can figure out how to somehow address that interconnectedness within the general plan somehow and even just update this language. I know this um, this draft is the product of many months of, and years of, of work. Um, but I do feel like we're at this um tipping point now and you know, it may be helpful to address address these um different items in a way that's more current to where we are today, if that makes sense.
Maybe to add a little bit of guidance to that, because I, I know exactly where you're going with that. Um, you know, because I, I, I think that there's probably a limited amount of change that we can make at this point with regard to that. So it might be something as simple as um, and this is kind of where I, I brought up that point about, you know, we were saying that retail is dying and we want to make some of these adjustments. Um, but we don't necessarily want to be too prescriptive around what are the specific things that we're gonna have to do, or at least not in the general plan. So it might be something that we call for some kind of review or like an economic development body um, to, to oversee and, and sort of have like a, a specific call to action with regards to doing some kind of review strategically to understand some of those, some of those points that you're making. That might be an easier addition than to um, than to necessarily have like direct content that addresses some of those, those exact points, at least at this point.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy with that. I just think that there's like you know, we, we do see these, this kind of title shift happening and um, and the retail component is definitely is part of this discussion because these are the exact things that we're looking at as a nation and um as like how we're gonna use these centers, you know, it's, it's not just San Rafael's specific issue. And um, all of these different factors could help, or all these different subjects could help address, you know, the retail centers that we have to, you know, make sure remain viable.
Yeah, you know, so I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here to, to your point again, um that it might be challenged, because it, it might also be seen as like being overly political to have um like a a defined approach to that particular challenge that you're talking about. And we don't, we don't, we don't necessarily want to limit the, the city's sort of approach to that. Um, but in terms of like creating a platform for addressing that, it might, it might be helpful to in that same, and this may be the prior chapter, but in that same section, we talk about like the, the foundational overview or sort of that, that bigger picture, to have more specific language around, say, these are this, like these, of these inner, these, all these different issues that we've identified, like there are some intersections. Um, we don't necessarily need to get explicitly into it, because I think the different elements down below are gonna talk about those, those challenges. But we do need a place where we can discuss how they all intersect. And um, you know, what are the, what are the different activities that we're going to need to do to um come up with sort of a a, for lack of a better word, a political approach to address some of those challenges in a way that's sort of as non-parasite as possible. But then also, how do we measure effective change? Because like, you know, Aldo brought, or sorry, uh, Jim Ricardo brought up um, the segregation of the city. I mean, and that's tied very closely to like the retail nature of the city, right? Because the retail jobs, you know, ha, you know, pay at a certain level, which, given the expensiveness of housing, limits people to certain areas. So when we talk about equity, we can, you know, we can talk about, yeah, we're committed to this, but what does that actually mean? Like, what are the investments that are gonna have to be made in order to, to make some of these things happen? We can't be prescriptive, but I, I do think that we need to have a very explicit call to action about how do we address those things and like, how do we build metrics, specific metrics of success? We know that, hey, yeah, we are less segregated or we are, you know, more diverse or whatever the, the desired metrics are.
Yeah, if we can say, oh, a certain percentage of our um, blue collar workforce or, you know, ca, um, is able to, is living in the city limits, like that's, that's something that we can point to. And I agree. I don't want to be prescriptive, especially, you know, I hate to go, keep going back to Northgate, but like we've done enough in the city to deter developers from continuing to try to you know, do something on that site. So I definitely, you know, wanna, wanna make sure that I'm clear that I don't want to be prescriptive, but I, you know, I agree with you that we, we should have a place to like address how these all these subjects kind of come together.
So I, actually I had a question on this, because I, I'm listening to what you're saying, Commissioner Samutti. I think it makes sense. I'm just in my head, I'm trying to think like, how does that play out on paper? Um, because the words you're using feel like uh objectives and key results framework. And that, that's, that feels very difficult to, to prescribe here. And I'm I know what you're, I, I think I know what you're trying to say, but I don't even know how we, how we do that.
So I, I think it can be as simple as just like a call to action to just say like, um, the, the city, the city needs to have like an intersectional, similar to the, the body that came together to build the general plan. Like, we need to have some sort of intersectional assembly to identify objectives and key results around these particular issues. So the plan itself doesn't need to say like what that needs to look like or how it needs to happen. It's more just a call to action that says we need to like be explicit about how we approach this particular challenge.
Got it. That makes sense.
Barry, I want to take this back to you. Are you getting, do you have questions or?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm absorbing and processing um what this means in terms of, of uh potential edits. I, I wouldn't want to overpromise on some of this because it's really more strategic plan focused and this being a general plan, I think it's really it's building a bridge to another document that's going to kind of do what you're describing and not doing it in the general plan. I always kind of caution that the general plan can't be everything. Um, and that, you know, we, we're laying a, a framework. Um, so I understand that the need for, for, you know, for that bridge, but I don't I wouldn't say that that's really the function of the general plan per se. Um, also, I think a lot of what we're talking about is referenced in later elements of the plan and um, these relationships start to become more apparent the deeper you go through the document and um you know, something like innovative housing types is going to get really flushed out much more in the housing element than it will be in the land use element. So um, it, it, it's, it's kind of a staging question there.
Yeah, I I, I, I thought the land use is fine. I mean, I think it's a good, like you said, staging or intro section. Um, was there anything else we wanted to focus in as a commission? I think Barry's got a little bit of direction on this idea of tying it in together and what Commissioner Samutti is thinking of. How would that fit in? So maybe that's a common theme we can think about as we go through these chapters and keep providing some further input or thoughts on that. Okay.
Great. Um, so I'll, we'll move on to chapter four. Is that?
Yep, please.
Okay. Um, yeah, this is a little bit different. I mean, that, that it's, it's kind of a tough chapter to tackle. Um, I, I'm not gonna go through uh obviously the eighty pages or so of this chapter. I, I think I just want to say, um, you know, this is the most grassroots part of the general plan. It really is the bottom-up part and a lot of the plan is top-down. Um, and so the, you know, the challenge in putting this element together is to make sure that it adds up to kind of, you know, to the whole city and it's not contradicting the direction that we're providing at the ci, at the citywide level. Um, the, the, the risk when you do an element like this, and I'll say that um it's not that common in a general plan to have an element that does this uh because of the risk of saying, you know, we want these things in the community, but not in our neighborhood. And uh, you don't want thirty-three neighborhood profiles all saying that, because then, you know, where, where, where does that leave you? Um, so I, I will say, I think we've done a, a, a good job in assembling this element with, with uh San Rafael's neighborhoods to find that balance and um, address some of the really important local issues. And um, build something that does take the citywide policies and lands them on the ground and, and roots them in place. So uh, I, I'm, I'm not gonna um, I think, say anymore about that unless there are specific comments from um you know, from, from commissioners. This is, again, this element of all the elements is, is the one that was most influenced by the, the community's input, I think.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Privatalli, please. Uh, yeah, I, I I totally understand where you're coming from. This, there's so much content in this uh chapter and I think it's just an amazing um body of work and I really appreciate you putting this all together and I can see all the um, work that's been put into it by all the uh volunteers, members of the communities. Um, I did have a quick question on the um southeast canal section and forgive me if I missed this, but um, you know, I know, I, I came across online that there was a Spanish language community engagement program survey um specifically for the twenty forty plan. And um I mean, just quickly, the uh I think it does a great job of listing what's important to folks living in and working in uh the canal area and um, like for instance, one of, I think the top um issue that's noted is um the cleanliness of the streets. And um, and then there are lots of other issues that are, are prioritized. And I'm just wondering if um that uh survey is noted is referenced in the um canal and southeast chapter and specifically, um, can we highlight uh a need to essentially um you know, improve uh the canal uh area, particularly relative to other neighborhoods in San Rafael? Um, to bring that neighborhood up to speed um on, on multiple fronts.
Yeah, I'll just respond quickly to that. That's in the equity, diversity, inclusion element. We profiled the survey and we talked about some of the um, the needs in, in the canal area. Um, that the, the Spanish language outreach was interesting. We, we tried uh to do a few traditional workshops in Spanish and got very poor attendance and ended up um, doing a lot of one-on-one interviews with um, I think a hundred and forty people um in Spanish and get, and really pulling that feedback into something um that was much, ended up being much more valuable than um a, a, a traditional workshop. Uh, and, and I think a lot of that input is reflected in that element as opposed to in the canal section of the neighborhoods element, which is really more focused on, I think, the land use issues in, in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I was wondering if in the downtown section of land use, um, if there can be any um updated language to address um more regular or planned um blocking off of Fourth Street for pedestrian and outdoor dining. Um, but we've seen in the last six months that that's um really helped improve um, really the vibrancy of downtown. And it would be, it'd be a good thing to like point to and consider as we move forward, the twenty forty general plan.
Anyone else? I think it's interesting to think about what we're doing right now because of COVID and how that could impact long-term plans. Commissioner Davidson, please.
I, I just want to add twenty-second comment. When we were working on this, one of the recommendations and most, one of the most controversial ones, and Barry can attest, was the recommendation to do this closure, so for the Fourth Street permanently. And we were, you know, there was a lot of strong opinions around that subject. So it's really interesting to see what's happening right now because of COVID and I, I don't know, Barry, but that is a topic that I'm sure will surface again as we look more into precise development plan for downtown.
Yeah, I think that's right. And that downtown plan discussion is going to provide an opportunity to um go into some fairly uh, you know, detailed discussion of Fourth Street and its future.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Davidson, it's um interesting that this kind of mimics um, the idea of like a lot of companies really wanting their workforce in the office and thinking that the only way to be effective is in the office. And we're starting to see that like um, there's, there's a middle ground, you know, we, we we have a lot of like social capital built up to be able to be effective. So you know, in the future, we might be half-time, half-time, or you know, people can create their own um schedules and in the same way, this downtown Fourth Street closure, I, I know that a lot of people would oppose to it, but now that it's existing, I know that we don't have the amount of traffic we did prior, there's, you know, so there, there are things to consider, but now that there's a taste of it, i- it may be a more palatable, you know, discussion. And I think it would be really a great amenity to have our community, you know, um, have more livability within the downtown. A great amenity to have our community, you know, um have more livability within the downtown.
I look forward to the programs that are gonna surface out of this plan because they're gonna get interesting.
I'll just chime in very quickly that I lived in Boulder, Colorado for three years. And they closed off their downtown street called Pearl Street and and made it into a walking street with tons of. Restaurants that spill out into um the the closed off street and gardens and whatnot and. You know, people love it, so it's it was definitely a success there.
Thanks. Barry, any follow-ups on this one before we move on?
Uh no, I think I'll, if I may, move on to chapter five, Community Design and Preservation. Um. I I we did a a pretty big makeover of this chapter of the plan. If you put. Chapter uh the community design element from general plan twenty twenty. And this community design element side by side, you'll find a lot of both organizational change. And policy changes. I don't know that we uh really introduced a lot of new concepts that aren't already being done in practice, but. Um we certainly, I think, moved the needle forward um and by reorganizing this plan around these um five new goals. Uh to me, I I think the element is going to be more effective in um, you know, in in achieving its goals. You know, I there's a there's the the initial goal is really about the sense of place in the city. Actually, the first two goals are really about. The sense of place in the city. Um. The goal on attractive streets and public space, I think they have a goal in the general plan where all of the policies. On the public realm live is uh is an important thing, and so this really speaks to. Um just the quality of our public spaces and by that I'm including streets as well, so it's 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 all of our public rights away. Our parks, our plazas, our open spaces. Um so you get into things like street trees and. Tree maintenance and tree replacement, not so much um the development. Related tree issues, but really just the the maintenance of our urban forest and our our street, our city street trees. Uh and then go for on quality construction and design. This probably was the most controversial. Uh the policies under this goal are probably the most controversial because this is really where we deal with things like. They design standards versus design guidelines and navigating that kind of awkward. Um well, what's a guideline? What's a standard? And and uh you know, a lot of the conversation we've had tonight is along those lines, you know, what what's advisory and what's required. I think we, most of this is advisory. I'll say that a lot of the language in this section is intentionally. Um aspirational and not regulatory. And I think because this essentially says, if you want regulatory, we're doing objective design standards. You know, we have this the zoning standards, we have a form-based code in our downtown that's design-focused. Um it points in that direction, but this language is mostly um, you know, encourage compatible design and. Encourage context-sensitive design, that that's um the the overall tone. Uh and I'll close by just saying, you know, I I we we ramped up the historic resources discussion in this chapter quite a bit. Um there's discussion of archaeological resources and tribal cultural resources in this chapter, um including policies. On um preservation of Native American resources and consultation with Native American tribes. Um which I think is is important to have here. Um. And yeah, I I I won't say much more about that. Again, I I would love to hear from. The commission as to questions or comments or thoughts about anything in this chapter.
Christian Pravitali, please.
Uh yeah, I I'm glad you brought up um consultation with Native American tribes. Uh that's something I wanted to ask about. Um I noticed that in the um historical historic resources map figure five point five. There was uh just one uh listing of a Native American um uh location and I understand that's. Based on the the footnote here, it's because um that's the only one that's been listed formally and. By the city of San Rafael or on a state or federal register. It's the Miller Creek School Indian mound. Um and I'm just wondering, you know, is it, do you think it may be feasible to work with a um. Tribal relations consultant or uh Native American tribes that are either still local or. Um possibly have a connection to this area after being displaced to identify um. More uh locations that have um, you know, significance to Native tribes. I'm sure there are, it seems like there probably are more in our community.
Um yeah, I you know, I'll I'll respond to that and then I see Paul is uh is here to 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 add to that. Part of this process is is consultation. I mean, so we initially at the beginning of this. Process reached out through the Native American Heritage Commission uh at the state level and were given a list of of contacts who we. Then reached out to and we did get some um feedback as to what should be in the plan, which we've included and. That begins a process that actually is going to happen now with the release of the EIR. And um the general plan will build, there'll be some more back and forth and some more direct communication. Um with tribal representatives to see if they're, if the language in the plan and in the EIR. Is acceptable or whether we need to make some changes to that.
Okay. Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
So I guess I know when I turn on my camera, Barry has a cue that I want to stick my nose in. I do wanna, I do wanna comment on this topic because going back about twenty plus years ago. Uh we put together uh uh a program called Pass Finder where we have. Uh mapping system that's basically a parcel base that identifies different levels. Of archaeological sensitivity from low to high, low, medium and high. And frankly, we already have a list of recorded uh known archaeological sites throughout the community. The. The um the point that I want to make is a lot of that stuff is confidential. Because if you start publishing where these sites are located, it's an open invitation for people to go out and start. Snooping around and digging around. We have very sensitive areas. I could name three areas of San Rafael. One is downtown, one is Gerstle Park. And one is Glenwood. And those three areas have a a concentration of recorded sites throughout the community. And again, they are, they are usually held to confidence because of that, but we do have some level of information here. I just want to let you know that. Um that that information is on file with the city, but we keep it in confidence.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Thoughts on this chapter? I thought it was really good.
Good, thank you. No? Okay, shall I continue on, Paul?
I think so.
Yeah, Chair Mercado, I just want to add one thing because it it uh. It adds to the discussion of the comments that we received regarding redwoods. Uh the city has not, you know, we've had. Over the years, requests to do and and to adopt a a heritage tree ordinance. And it's gone back and forth and back and forth and there is. A policy and two programs in this chapter that deal with tree replacement. And typically, how we look at trees is that usually. Trees of importance, whether they're redwoods or they're oaks or they're even heritage trees. What we do is we look at them on a case-by-case basis as development comes in. We have criteria in our design review ordinance that requires us to look at the natural conditions of the property. And very often on projects, what we'll do is we try to encourage minimizing tree removal, particularly native trees like redwoods and oaks. And if they are removed, we usually require some level of replacement. And there are, like I mentioned, there's a program and um a policy in here regarding tree replacement. So uh in part, we've responded to the question regarding redwood trees that came up earlier, so I just wanted to bring that. To everyone's attention that it's in this particular element of the general plan.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. That's a good point.
Okay, um moving on to uh chapter six, I I'll state here that um. Chapter six is where the uh the natural environment subsection of the plan begins, so we've. We've been through a series of chapters that uh kind of fall into the banner of the built environment and these four chapters. Uh six, seven, eight, nine are really more focused on the natural environment, uh six being conservation and climate change. The major change in this chapter is really to integrate the um. The climate change action plan that was adopted by the city a couple of years ago. And include um some of what was in the sustainability element. I think, uh you know, there was a conscious decision made. To take the sustainability element of the general plan, which had been added in two thousand eleven and um. Make that a really kind of more of a theme of the entire plan that appears in each element. On some level, rather than having all of the sustainability policies in uh in a single place. Um most of those policies, just as a practical matter, fall within the in the conservation and climate change uh element. And mostly they deal with energy conservation. Um to some extent, the land use and transportation aspect of sustainability and GHG is in this chapter, but that really. Appears in the in land use and transportation as well, so I would say. Um you know, we do have a dedicated goal in this chapter, in this element to greenhouse gas reduction. And it commits the city to maintaining and implementing the climate change action plan and updating that plan. On a regular basis. That's an area where there are measurable targets. There are metrics. The the other topic areas, um we have now goals for clean air and clean water. Uh these were previously in a freestanding air and water quality element. Um we didn't lose anything when we brought them in. I think, in fact, these uh the the number of policies. On air and water quality have increased um over the previous general plan. Uh we got some great feedback from our steering committee. On uh I think the whole concept of green infrastructure and um, you know, incorporating our stormwater management. Uh strategies with our conservation programs and, you know, sort of where infrastructure meets resource conservation. Um and then, you know, back to the basics, the 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 first set of policies which really look at. Wetlands and creeks and um special status species are primarily intact from the previous general plan. And carried forward from uh from general plan twenty twenty. Um the one thing that is a little bit um in influx, we haven't yet. Learned if the SEQA consultant is going to recommend any additional policies in this element to mitigate environmental impacts. Um that the idea behind the EIR is that um if there are certain impacts that uh are are significant, that they may prescribe. Additional policies to be added mostly to this element uh as mitigation. And at this point, we haven't, we haven't seen any. Um so. Um I think that this is, you know, meant to be a strong set of mitigating measures at the program level for. Environmental impact, so um again, I'll I'll see if there are specific questions or comments from commissioners before. Saying anymore about that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question about um. Twenty thirty-five electro vehicle mandates um that are, you know, that were just recently. Uh announced by the state or the governor and and now that we're going through this, I'm guessing it's going to be addressed in the mobility. Section, not chapter six.
Right, yeah, EV policies are in the mobility element. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I had just taken these notes prior to this meeting, but we're starting to see where things are starting to land.
Yeah, I I will say, I don't, I'm, I don't know that we have a target like the one that was just adopted. This was, most of this was drafted. About a year ago, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it just seems like um there's a lot of infrastructural requirements and things like that that we need to address. If we're gonna try to achieve goals like that.
Anyone else?
There was a, yeah, there was, there was a comment that was brought up and um I can't source it, I'll. For this moment, but there was a request for tying it into what uh Tam had done with for wildlife and because just a master plan. Um I know, Barry, you're gonna go through later on the correspondence and consider feasibility, um but maybe just um. On first blush, i- is that really a feasible consideration or is that something that's kind of outside the scope of of consideration here?
Well, I think it's um, I think the request was to to do a master plan in the future. There are a lot of references in the general plan to doing. Master plans in the future. It's easy to add a program like that and then it's just a question of is it, is it fundable? Uh who's gonna do it? Uh does the city have the resources to do it and and, you know, maybe in twenty years if it's a long-term objective. Uh or if there's grant funding available, um you know, certainly having that kind of language in the plan may help position the city for grants if something like that. Uh could be done. There, I I'd say there's no reason not to do it. Um but, you know, it's it's a question of priorities, really.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? My question, Barry, was if if the EIR does add additional mitigations in this chapter, what's the process for that? Does that get? Disseminated out and those additions get published again for public input or?
Um well, first of all, they would be in the EIR, which is, you know, you'll be seeing in about a month, so um that. That'll be the first place they'll be disclosed and then we would bring them to um. The commission as part of an addendum that includes not only the additional mitigation measures, but. Any other edits that are being made in response to your comments and public comments.
Thank you.
Uh okay, I guess I'll move on to chapter seven.
Yep.
Which is Parks, Recreation and Open Space. And again, I mentioned earlier in the introduction that this is a combination of what was the Parks and Rec element. Um and what was the open space element. There there were a lot of, you know, I think, questions in. When we were looking at those two elements independently, well, aren't aren't most of the city's open spaces parks as well and. Mer, you know, putting those together just seemed more organic and made made some sense and looking at the recreational function of open space as well as the. Conservation function. Um I think, I think they're blended um appropriately in this chapter. We've added quite a few policies on parks and recreation to this. Uh we did have a couple of um work sessions with the city's Parks and Rec Commission. To pull this together and we had a Parks and Rec uh commissioner, actually to one and then a an alternate on the. Uh steering committee, so it was good to get that perspective. We've raised the city, there's a recommendation in the plan to raise the city's per capita acreage standard from three acres per one thousand residents to four acres. For one thousand residents. Uh that is actually in recognition of the existing standard. The city currently has. Four acres of parkland for every one thousand residents in the city, but the but the. The official standard is three acres per thousand.
Oh, okay. I was wondering about that, so it's to reflect what's actually in practice right now.
Exactly. If you continue your current standard over time, you're gonna diminish your acreage, you you know, you.
Gotcha.
Diminishing returns and um the the thinking around that is it it justifies the park. Uh impact fee that the city collects. Um this was an area where the steering committee, I think, um you know, did provide some. Different perspectives because there's a school of thought that, you know, it's just gonna make it more expensive to to do development. It's gonna increase housing costs if we raise our park impact fees. Um and how do you balance the need for more parkland and the impacts of development on parkland? With the desire to not raise your development fees. Uh and that was a, that was a good conversation, I think, at the steering committee level. Um and, you know, the way it's reflected here is, well, maybe there are exemptions for. Affordable housing or for rental housing or for other types of uses. So and, you know, maybe there's more flexibility in what what uh what be, what is open space or what is park. Land in the city and we're looking at things like, you know, rooftops and downtown development uh as a as a potential open space. Uh area, so I think this kind of takes it to the next level in terms of the policy framework. Um and I I don't wanna um, you know, drive this conversation too much. I guess I I. I guess I, again, I'll turn it back to the commission as to thoughts or, or specific comments.
Thank you. Anybody's specific comments or questions? Mine was the three to four acreage, so I'm glad you talked about that.
Um, I had one. Um, uh, I know, again, I, I respect the fact that this has gone through, um, the community, uh, for several years. Uh, I, I didn't, and I know later on, we went to this in the equity, diversity, inclusion chapter. Um, there is a, there's a clause in here that talks about making sure that the parks are available to all and they're high quality. Um, only just because I, I encountered this in, in the Presidio. I know the Presidio Trust is working to make sure that they're measuring, uh, the notion of equity, that, that the parks are serving not just the immediate residents, but all of San Rafael and, and the, and the public generally. Um, I know, again, this probably speaks Barry to funding, but I think it would be good to, uh, in going back to, I think, an observation that Commissioner Samudra made, that some way to, to measure, uh, and keep ourselves accountable to that objective, you know, are all, are all community members being served, uh, in our, in our open spaces and parks. Um, so I, I didn't see that explicitly, but I think it's implied, but I think we can be probably explicit around that.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. And the way that plays out is really saying if you're in a multifamily, uh, neighborhood or multifamily, um, setting, your need for open space is going to be higher, um, because you don't have a yard. And it's, it's that, it's that recognition, I think, basic things like that, that, um, denser areas may have a greater need for, for open space. Um, or if you're low, lower income and you don't have the resources to access private facilities and private open space, that, um, you know, those resources are available to you in your, in your own community. Um, we, I think we tried to do that, but we'll, I'll look again and, and also in the, uh, in the equity element, we'll have to make sure we've, we've made that point.
Barry had a one question about the trails master plan. And I'm not familiar with the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, but in terms of, um, you know, I did see some language in the section 3.8 and then some other sections about like balancing uses. And, um, as a mountain biker myself, I know that there is a lot of, and I like to hike with my kids. Um, there's this ongoing, um, tension between hikers and mountain bikers and the amount of trail access that's given to biking and hiking. And, you know, is that, is access to trails in terms of use addressed in this general plan? Um, is this the place for it or is it that master bike and pedestrian master plan?
Yeah, it's, it's a, a trails master plan where you would get into that. I think we go, we kind of go right to where you, where, what you just said. You know, we acknowledge that there are conflicts between user groups on a trail, and that's the reason that you would need a master plan or some follow-up to, um, to reconcile that or to look at that. Um, not, you don't do, wouldn't do that within the general plan itself.
Yeah. And then as the birthplace of mountain biking, um, not San Rafael specifically, but Marin, um, we know that it's a, a real destination for, you know, Marin in general is a destination for mountain biking. So I think, you know, trying to balance those uses is important, but I, I do like, when I'm on the trail and I see, there's a ton of people hiking and walking, and I think that's an invaluable and amazing resource for people who live here. And you do see a diversity of people out on the trails, which is also a really, um, it's a really empowering and like leveling thing to see, you know, everybody out on the trail. So, um, I think in terms of this chapter, it's a really important thing to, you know, continue to address.
Great. I, I just had a quick comment. I really like this chapter. Thank you so much for pulling this all together. Um, I wanted to thank you and, and sort of highlight, um, section 1.12 joint use, which is the concept of, um, the city and schools, uh, sharing, uh, school yards for the purpose of parks and recreation after school hours. Um, I think that's, you know, frankly sorely needed right now. So I know we're not talking necessarily about right now, but, um, I know in Terre Linda, we could definitely use, um, more access to, um, the schools grounds after hours. I think people would certainly benefit from that. Uh, thank you.
Paul, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that was a very observant comment, and let me tell you, that's purposeful. We have, we're in a community where, um, it's not likely we're going to get new parks, new neighborhood parks. And so joint use and doubling up on facilities is real critical. And so that's one of the reasons why this, this policy was added in here. Uh, historically, parks have been developed as a result of new subdivisions. And like the last new subdivision that was built was Lockloman Marina. And then of course they included a parkland in Redwood Village in the north San Rafael area. But we don't have huge parcels of land anymore where we're going to see that level of development, which typically warrant and by our code require that they add a park site to their development that's accessible to the public at large. So that's a really important, uh, policy that we're putting in here. So thank you for bringing it up. I did want to comment on one thing before you move on to the next element, and that is open space. I come from a generation in San Rafael when we used to promote, um, an open space priorities list of lands where the city had bond money and the city would actually actively go out there and purchase land or work partnerships with the neighborhoods like in Terre Linda, where we have the Sleepy Hollow Terre Linda Divide in the county of Marin, where the areas were taxed and such. We don't see that anymore. And the city's done a pretty darn good job at preserving open space. We have thousands of acres of open space in our community. And the one thing that this element focuses on is the next level, as Barry had mentioned, and that is the maintenance and management part of that land, which is very critical to fire prevention and our local hazard mitigation plan. So that's why you see the more emphasis on management rather than preservation, because that preservation's already occurred from past efforts.
Thank you.
Great. Um, okay, we're getting into the final stretch, uh, for this evening, uh, safety and resilience, which is chapter eight. Uh, and, and I made this point earlier that the local hazard mitigation plan, which was adopted in 2017, has been incorporated, uh, into this document to a great extent, a lot of additional policy language, uh, specifically with respect to wildfire. And, um, I'm glad Paul is, is with us because we're, uh, also looking at a large number of new sea level rise policies. I think there was a, there was one policy in the previous plan which acknowledged sea level rise as, uh, a future issue. Actually, that at its time would have been very cutting edge to even acknowledge sea level rise, because even in 2004, people were just, uh, beginning that conversation. Uh, I think we've, we've now, uh, matured and the hazard has gotten much more apparent and is, is affecting the city and certainly during the horizon of this plan is going to get worse. Um, so we've added a series of policies. Uh, we've done some background studies that are included as appendices to the general plan. Um, and really the intent is to lay the groundwork for an adaptation plan, as we talked about earlier. Um, that said, this plan also, this element also looks at, um, earthquake hazards, landslide hazards, hazardous materials, emergency preparedness and evacuation routes, um, and some of the other natural hazards that exist in, in San Rafael. So a lot of the content of this element is driven by state law. Um, but I think, you know, we've really made it relevant and, and local and responded to some of the input we've received from the community and, uh, through, from the, again, from the steering committee. So I'll, I'll, uh, stop with that and see if there are any specific questions or, or Paul, if you want to add anything about the sea level rise, uh, section, um, either now or.
Uh, thank Barry for the invitation. I would like to add a little about sea level rise, uh, because we, um, we've been following the lead with the county, uh, the public works department in the county of Marin, um, Prepared Bay Wave, which is a vulnerability assessment, um, that's countywide along the bayfront. It's an incredible detailed document on all of the community assets and each, each of the communities along the bayfront in Marin County. And is, it is our foundation for moving forward. And the reason why I want to bring up and just chime in on, on this topic is that, setting aside the adaptation plan, what we put in here is also about awareness and disclosure. So that as people move forward and they invest in areas that are susceptible to sea level rise, they're aware that it's an issue in that area. So that's part of the story and that's part of the programs and the policies that are presented in here. What I would like to suggest the commissioners to do is last week, we gave a presentation to the city council on sea level rise, specific to this element of the general plan. And it followed the, um, it followed the presentation that Barry gave on the introduction to the general plan 2040 at large. And there are two supportive documents that are referenced in this element that will be appendices in the general plan that are basically guiding documents on moving forward with how to prepare an adaptation plan and cert, and certain ideas and suggestions to start that discussion. So, um, we think this is a good starting point for this topic area. There's a lot to do and, you know, there's linkages to other things that we're doing like priority development areas to get money to do that adaptation planning. But we feel very strong about these policies and programs in this element.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, Commissioner Privatelli, please.
Yeah, I know it's late and this is a huge topic, so I'm going to try to be brief. Um, and I'll actually, uh, just start with fire safety before I have, before I deliver comments on sea level rise. And that is that, um, I, and I apologize if I missed it, but I'd really like to see our communities that have, that are in high fire risk areas, um, at the wildlife urban interface, um, have, uh, basically emergency egress, uh, roads, um, that are not used except for in an emergency, um, it obviously in order to, to preserve life. And, um, I can tell you an example is that, you know, the West End neighborhood around Fremont Street, uh, does not have an emergency egress, as far as I could tell. I was up there a cou, a few weeks ago as part of a, um, an application, and, uh, I was very surprised. Um, and also, you know, taking that neighborhood as a case study, I feel like, you know, within the next 20 years, it is also very important for those neighborhoods to, um, be, um, upgraded or improved, the streets to be upgraded or improved in order to allow access to emergency vehicles, access of emergency vehicles to all homes. Um, I'm very, I'm extremely concerned about that community and other communities like it in San Rafael. I actually don't know how many of them are out there. Um, so that's the one comment I have on fire safety. Um, and then just quickly on sea level rise, uh, I, uh, I, I looked at the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, which I think is based on the bay wave analysis that was, uh, mentioned. And, yeah, I think it's great. Um, I added up all the, um, infrastructure, uh, upgrades that, uh, are in the appendix of that, um, sea level rise. And I got a figure of $86 million. And, um, actually, uh, now that you mention, I'm not clear if that was just for the city of San Rafael or for the whole county. Um, but I'm concerned that we are not starting to save money now, um, or maybe we are, but I feel like we should be starting to say, we should start saving money now to make those infrastructure improvements, um, in order to mitigate, uh, sea level rise and, and support, um, adaptation. Um, I'm really happy to hear that there are metrics that are being monitored in order to, um, potentially trigger, uh, projects or studies or whatnot. I feel like, um, you know, 20, I think we, we discussed 2050 as being, um, the year where we'll, we will start to see sea level rise. But actually in the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, um, it talks about a three-foot flood and plus 10 inches of sea level rise, um, by 2040, uh, and sorry, a three, a 100 year flood at three foot, um, plus the 10-year sea level rise. And I just want to make sure that, um, you know, everyone knows that a 100-year storm means that there's like a eight, 18% chance of that storm happening within the next 20 years. Um, so it's, it, I would say it's, you know, it's a pretty good probability that we are going to see, um, like the area around Canal and, um, you know, uh, uh, McKinnis flooded severely within the next 20 years, I'm sorry to say. Um, anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Actually, Commissioner Privatelli, just on that pointer on wildfire, it's, it's not explicitly laid out, but I will say, I think they, um, used an appropriate catchall and Barry, you'll correct me if I misspeak, but the wildfire prevention and protection action plan includes 38 prevention measures. I don't think, um, Commissioner Privatelli specifically call out a, you know, emergency, um, roadway, but I think that that's, that's probably appropriate to include in there. Um, uh, so I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I think it did to like, there was like a, a catchall that, that expanded to another document. I don't know if the, the wildfire prevention and protection action plan is going to be put into the appendix, but it's pretty comprehensive and long, so I don't know if that's worth doing that to kind of address that.
Yeah, it, it's, it's cross-referenced, um, in, in this element and, uh, and it does support, I mean, I think the element supports the idea of emergency, uh, access of roads. It doesn't get to the specifics of the, the neighborhoods that need those roads, where I think the wildfire prevention and protection plan does address some of those issues at the place-based level. Um, but a, as a policy, that's definitely part of the, the safety element.
Yeah, um, I have a question. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Hall.
Just finish off. Yes, sir. I was, um, just one more thing. I just wanted to just call out, uh, I was very happy to see, um, that there is a specific call out for community, uh, engagement in specific to neighborhoods, that there's emergency plans. Um, and I thought that the policies are, are very, it didn't say shall, but pretty much said that, you know, the neighborhoods will have implemented emergency evacuation plans. So I was very happy to, to see that, um, in there explicitly. That was all I had to say. Sorry, Commissioner, sorry.
Oh, no problem. Sorry to cut you off. Um, I agree with you on that though. Um, I think that each neighborhood is so distinct in San Rafael and just having like the HOAs and the community groups, um, finally that effort will make sure that, you know, all the residents are really taken care of and everybody's plugged into the plan because, you know, if there's a general city plan, I don't think, um, it's as effective. Um, but I had a question about, um, policy versus enforcement, because we do have a number of policies or laws or ordinances in place regarding, like for instance, a wildlife interface zone and the hillsides and, uh, you know, all of these areas. Um, but like I live in Fair Hills, we're in a wildlife interface zone, and there are a number of properties that are not falling in accordance with what the fire department requires. So, um, this may not be like the document that's going to help enforce, you know, we don't, we don't enforce policies, we write them. Um, but it is a little disheartening to know that we're, you know, we're trying to work on creating better policies, but the policies that are in place are just not even being enforced right now. And how do we, how do we get others on board to make sure that we're all safe? Like I live on a really small street and because of the two properties that abut Fair Hills, like I would have to flee on foot in the back of my property because of the fire came up the hill. Um, there's a ton of fuel at the bottom of my street, so I would have to like grab two kids and, you know, get my like super strength and get out of here. I, I don't think I'd be able to, to drive out because, um, there's just so much fuel under me, even though my property is fine. So. So, and the open space too, you know, we have a lot of eucalyptus trees. We know that those are invasive species. Those are, you know, huge fuel fire hazards. And I mean, that's a big problem that is going to be very expensive to deal with. As we look into these, like, you know, we look at the table and we look at like extreme risk of high heat and, you know, the risk, high likelihood of wildfires. We just kind of have like, we have a lot of, we have a lot of existing conditions that make the perfect, you know, it's a perfect recipe for us having a lot of damage and loss of life, a potential loss of life.
Yeah. Anyone else on this chapter? Nope.
Okay, so I'll close with the noise element. And really, the only thing I would call your attention to there is that we have the noise compatibility table, which is, it's fairly standard. I'll say that this is, these are the state guidelines for noise compatibility. This is table eight dash two, sorry, nine dash two. And essentially lays out the types of land uses that are compatible in different, where different ambient noise levels exist. And if you're in an area where the noise level is above that threshold, you're required to incorporate certain measures into the design and construction of your project to reduce noise to certain levels that are specified in the building code. Again, this isn't, this is an example of where the plan quantifies and has a measurable standard that's enforceable, that translates into either code or noise ordinance or, you know, other city regulations that carry out these policies. The policies themselves, I think, you know, again, a lot of carryover from the prior general plan. And I will call out that we did updated noise contour diagrams. These are these diagrams that show the noise levels at varying distance from the freeways, which are the primary noise sources in the city. And give a sense of where those high noise areas are. And they are primarily within a couple hundred feet of both 101 and 580. So, any questions or comments on that element?
Bringing it back, anybody? I actually thought that contour map was really interesting to show that. I mean, right there, I was surprised how loud that is.
Yeah, I'll also add that the contour map in the actual element is really a key map to a much more detailed set of maps that will live in the appendix of the general plan, where you'll be able to see what's happening on a parcel of land. Because these are, you know, map of the entire city, but it's scalable so that when you zoom in for, you know, on a particular street or property, you'll be able to see what the ambient noise level is there.
We'll just say amicably, I live in the West End and, you know, looking at that contour map, I'm sure it captures the ambience, like ambient sounds throughout a given day. But I will say that, I don't know if it's more recently, but people really gun their vehicles going through there to a point of just like, yeah, I'm seeing Paul nod. I think I know where you, where you live. But, you know, I don't know how we can account for that. I do see that there is a policy in there that talks about enforcing the existing California vehicle code. But man, I'll tell you, it can wake you out of sleep, some of the folks that gun their vehicles going through that Miracle Mile. So, I don't know if there's a, I don't think that there's a, like a buried suggestion here, but I don't know how we would kind of address that because I don't think I'm alone in saying that for this neighborhood.
No, I agree. I feel you. Any comments before we wrap up chapter nine or section nine? Nope. Great. Paul, please.
Yeah, I just want to add some concluding comments. A lot of this is carryover from the current general plan. We have a very, we have a very specific noise ordinance for which all of this information is translated in our noise element, where we have noise limitations for constructions and such. So, this is a chapter where you'll see a lot of shals primarily because it's linked back to an ordinance and also linked back to environmental mitigation. So when you look at the noise section of the draft DIR for the general plan, you're going to see a connection between this and the EIR. So...
Thank you. Good comment. Okay.
Yeah, just to say, so we're at the end of what we said we were going to cover this evening. We will be coming back to you on November 12th to talk about five more elements. And at that time, I think we're looking at a process similar to what we've just done. There may be some carryover comments from chapters one through nine that we can, you know, if there are public comments or if there are additional letters that come in on those chapters, we'll certainly be available to discuss those with the commission at that meeting. I think we, you know, getting through the mobility element is, it's a big task. It's, there's a lot of change in that element and some new ideas that we'll be talking with you about. I think the other elements are more straightforward. That one in particular has generated a lot of conversation throughout this process.
I just want to add real quick that the experience I had being part of the steering committee on the preparation of this document, it's very humbling. I learned so much and especially I appreciate the depth of expertise and knowledge from Barry and Paul and Rafi. It's amazing. I'm a civil engineer. That's my profession, not the county. But just the breadth of all the subjects you guys are experts on, it's really admirable. And thank you for the work you do. It's really, really much appreciated. And again, thank you for allowing me to participate in this process. I learned so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. I think if any commissioners want to provide any sort of general feedback or anything, right now's the time to do it. Rafi, are we adopting anything tonight or just accepting the public comments or anything? I don't think this is really an action item, correct?
We would ask for a motion to accept the report and to continue the hearing until November 12th for the remaining chapters.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Great. So the motion in the second. Does anybody have any other comments before maybe we take a roll call?
Can we just, can I get clarity on the motion in the second?
The motion was to accept the report and continue review of the additional chapters in the next meeting.
And who has a second?
Vice Chair Samuzi.
Thank you.
And just a quick comment. Thank you, Ali, as well, for all your contributions. I forgot to mention your name, but thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I think I'm just going to echo again, just gratitude to Barry and all staff. This is Herculean, to say the least. And also just appreciate the attention. And I know you used this word earlier on, Barry, but robust. And there was a robustness to the process that I appreciate and intentionality in terms of the number of meetings and the community engagement. You mentioned having to chase down neighborhood leaders. I don't think that that's a small feat. So, that among many things. Thank you for making this happen. And I'm proud that we're engaging the community in this way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else before we take a roll call?
Great job. Thank you very much. Amazing.
Great. So, I guess if we want to do a roll call, we have a motion in the second.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sadi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samuzi?
Yes.
And Chair Mercado?
Yes. Great. Well, thank you so much again. Very appreciated.
Thank you. Great feedback and comments tonight.
Yeah, and we look forward to the next meeting on that. So that was our item tonight. I think we are done on that one. And I'll move on to director's report.
I will try to keep it quick. We have, I just want to announce that we've moved into tier three in our shelter in place. And what that means is that we're going to start at City Hall. We're going to start our opening process. We are adjusting some things, our schedules, our protocols. So we're bringing staff back in. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some opening days and transition into a more regular schedule. Also, I wanted to mention that we do have some furlough days coming up, November 9th, 10th, and 11th. Actually, 9th, 10th, 11th is Veterans Day. So because of that, we're having to adjust some things. So our, we do have a planning commission meeting on the 12th. And we also have a furlough days in November, on November 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And that is just before Thanksgiving, so that entire week will be closed. And then as Barry mentioned, there's like a whole slew of general plan updates that are coming up in November and December. So it's going to be a busy couple of months. There were some changes to the planning commission's schedule. I think everybody pretty much responded. I'll send an updated schedule to your entire commission so that you understand which days are going to be planning commission dates. But essentially, November 12th and December 8th will be special planning commission meeting dates. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And any urgent messages or updates from the commissioners?
No, I do have a question for Ali real quick. So we're not meeting on the 15th. It's moving to the 8th.
There will be a meeting on the 15th, but there's a special meeting on the 8th for, 8th, I believe, is going to be some projects. Because we have so many general plan updates that are lined up, we are trying to fit in our regular projects as well. So December 8th would be a special meeting to allow your commission to review projects.
Okay, great.
And November and December are a little tough because the regular planning commission dates fall on Thanksgiving week and Christmas week.
Yeah.
So we lose a meeting each month. And so that's why we're going to have to add a meeting in November, a special meeting on the 17th, and then a special meeting on the 8th of December. So there'll be two meetings each month, just a little bit closer together.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate the work you guys do.
Same here. Yeah.
Yeah, you guys make it easy. Give it all the hard work.
All right. I think we're good.
Okay.
I'll close that out. We'll adjourn the meeting tonight. Great comments, everybody. And thank you. Everyone else.
Good night.